I'm going to call this meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the Ojai Planning Commission for October 1st, 2014. Members of the public wishing to address the Planning Commission on items appearing on the agenda are requested to complete a speaker's card and file it with the secretary prior to the start of the meeting. Cards are available in the lobby. Speakers should state their name and address for the record, and please limit your comments to three minutes or less. Comments must be directed to the commission, not the audience. While the Planning Commission is in session, all in attendance are expected to maintain order and decorum and to obey the orders of the Chair. Could we have a roll call, please?
Chair Merk.
Here.
Vice Chair Foster.
Here.
Commissioners LaJowski.
Here.
Jagiello.
Here.
Isabella.
Here.
Nolan.
Here.
Nicklin.
Yeah.
Commissioner LaJowski, could you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public communications, as time set aside during the Planning Commission meeting for members of the public to address the Planning Commission on items of city business other than scheduled agenda items. Matters raised at this time may be briefly discussed by the commission and will generally be referred to staff and/or placed on a subsequent agenda. Under state law, other than for emergency items, no action can be taken at this meeting. Is anyone from the public wanting to speak? We lost what little public we had. Okay. Consent items. The consent calendar is approved by a roll call vote in one motion. Should any member of the commission wish to discuss or disapprove an item, it must be removed from the consent calendar and considered as a separate item. We have two consent items tonight. One is the minutes of the regular meeting of the Planning Commission from September 3rd. The second is the minutes of the regular meeting of the Planning Commission from September 17th. Would anyone like to make a motion on these?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of September 3rd.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Could we have a roll call, please?
LaJowski.
Aye.
Jagiello.
Aye.
Isabella.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Merk.
Yes.
Nolan.
Abstain.
Nicklin.
Yes.
Thank you. You want to try for the next one as well?
I was indeed.
Okay.
Well, I'll make a motion that we adopt the meetings of the regular minutes of the Planning Commission from September 17th, 2014.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I will second that.
Thank you. Could we have a roll call, please?
Aye.
Jagiello.
Yes.
Isabella.
Yes.
Foster.
Abstain.
Merk.
Yes.
Nolan.
Yes.
Nicklin.
Yes.
Next is disclosure of site visits and ex parte contacts. Could we just start around the room here?
Does this go back like to the Signal Street? One again, okay. So, yeah, I have visited the site. I have talked to Mr. Fisher in regards to the project some months ago. I think it was in June. The McKee Street, I have had no contact with the applicants. I have discussed it with Commissioner Jagiello.
I went out to the property at Mr. Fisher's residence about a month ago, and I think that's the only thing I've done. And I need to recuse myself from the McKee project.
I represented Mr. Fisher when he purchased the property at 607 Signal. He called me some months ago. We had a brief conversation about his second unit, not about any of the issues that are before us tonight. And with regard to the McKee property, I did listen to Commissioner Jagiello's impressions about the project and briefly met the applicants.
I've visited both sites in the last two or three months and have had no contact with the applicants.
I have not visited the Fisher's site, but I had an extensive conversation with Commissioner Jagiello and the owners at the McKee site.
I've visited both sites. Commissioner Nicklin happened to be at the McKee site when I arrived, and he just generally showed me where to go, but we didn't really discuss any of the elements of the project. The applicant was there and introduced herself and offered, you know, if I had any questions, she would answer, but I didn't, and just continued on my own to tour the site. Thank you.
I have visited 607 Signal, and I'm recusing myself from item number five.
Thank you. Next item is our Municipal Advisory Council Planning Commission Liaison Report. There was no MAC meeting, and I think the next one is scheduled for October 20th, and Commissioner Nolan will be our representative there. So that brings us to our public hearing items. Sir.
Good evening, everybody. I just wanted to let you know that I'm going to be the liaison for the next three months. However, I'm going to have to leave tonight about 6:30 because we have a candidate's forum that the Chamber of Commerce and the Board of Realtors is putting on that begins at 7:00. So I thought rather than interrupt one of your public hearings, I could come up now and you could ask any questions you might have with me. I just wanted to say that I thought that last night's workshop went very well, and I hope we can work with that company to move some sort of affordable housing project forward. I thought there was a good discussion, and I'm hoping that we can do something. That'll still yet to be seen, but let's hope that we can do something. Other than that, I just want to thank you. I'm looking forward to having been around this body for 10 years. I'm looking forward to spending the next three months with you. Any questions of me? No? Okay. Thanks again for all your hard work.
Thank you. Thanks very much. All right. Next is a, we'll start the public hearing items. Item three is a text amendment, TA 1403, to amend ordinance 840 residential building heights, modifying section nine to provide for an exemption to the ordinance for projects submitted to the city prior to the effective date. The property owner applicant is the City of Ojai. Could we hear from the staff on this, please?
Yes. Good evening, Chair and members of the Planning Commission. As you mentioned, the item before you is a text amendment to the Ojai municipal code, which amends section nine of ordinance 840, which allows for an effective date for the ordinance, and that completes staff's report. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Short and sweet. Do we have any questions for staff about this text amendment? Okay. Oh. Director Bennett.
I wasn't at the pre-meetings yesterday, but I'm just wondering to staff, how come there are, I don't, this is the first time I've seen all these like additional pages of attachments, and I'm just wondering if we could briefly talk about that.
On, are you an I-
Yes. Just like-
I see that.
Yep.
Yeah, that's item four.
Oh, sorry.
Okay. It's all right. So there's really only one part in this that is marked in red under section nine. That's the only real change. Anybody from the public want to speak on this matter? Mr. Fisher, come on up. I heard she gave us a speaker's card. Thank you.
Short and sweet. I want to thank the staff for their work in preparing this and hope that the commission can support this because this is a necessary condition of the planning approval. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on this?
I'm sorry.
Catherine?
Thank you. If you don't mind, I just want to make sure that, you know, staff, we've kind of been trying to make this as clear as we possibly can, and with the red addition down there, I just like when you adopt your resolution for you to make the change with the exemption of projects submitted to the Community Development Department of the City of Ojai prior to the original effective date of ordinance 840. I just want to be very clear, you know, we never can be clear enough, so just want to make sure that it's clear. It's not the effective date of this ordinance, but the effective date of the original 840. Unless you want to make it effective by this ordinance, but originally you talked to 840, so I just want to make that clear there. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have any discussion on this item, or are we? I'd be willing to entertain a motion if someone wanted to make one.
I guess I'll make a motion to adopt Planning Commission Resolution Number, Sherry, what number is it?
Yeah.
Number 1410, recommending that the City Council adopt proposed zone text amendment, TA 14-03, which amends ordinance 840 to exempt projects submitted prior to effective date of the ordinance 840.
Thank you.
I will second.
Okay.
Go ahead.
I will second the motion.
Dueling seconds. Any further discussion? Could we?
Close the public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Should we make a motion to close the public hearing?
Close the public hearing. Do you want to make that?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to close.
And I'll second it.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right. So now, could we have a roll call on the motion?
Aye.
Jagiello.
Yes.
Isabella.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Merk.
Yes.
Nicklin.
Yes.
What about me?
Nolan.
Yes.
All right. Step one, Mr. Fisher.
Just in case. We needed that last vote.
All right. Item four is a design review permit, DRP 1404, and tree permit, T 1414, for a new two-plus story home with four-car carport at 607 North Signal Street, accessories parcel number 0210131020. The general plan land use designation of the property is medium density residential. The zoning classification of the property is residential special R.O. A categorical exemption has been prepared pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act. This is continued from the August 6th, September 3rd, and September 17th Planning Commission meetings. Could we hear from staff on this, please?
Yes. Good evening, Chair and members of the commission. Before I get into this staff report, I just wanted to point out that there's a revised resolution in front of you, and I provided one to the applicant, Mr. Fisher. And just to point out really quick and maybe give a minute or two to review it if you have not already, the resolution that was in your packet had a condition on the design review permit that the approval of DRP was contingent upon the zone tax amendment being approved by City Council, and we've revised the resolution to not condition the project. But if you look at the end of the resolution prior, before conditions of approval, it now reads, "Now therefore, the Planning Commission of the City of Ojai does hereby resolve as follows. Section one, that the Planning Commission determines that the above set forth findings are true and correct in regards to design review permit, DRP 1404, which findings are incorporated herein. Section two, approval of design review permit, DRP 1404, is contingent upon adoption of zone tax amendment, TA 1403, which provides a grace period for projects submitted prior to the original effective date of ordinance 840. If the text amendment, TA 1403, does not take effect by January 31st, 2015, then design review permit, DRP 1404, shall be deemed denied, and any appeal period for DRP 1404 shall run from that date. Section three, once design review permit, DRP 1404, is deemed approved and effective, it shall be subject to the following conditions." And then the conditions will take effect. And also to note that once the project is deemed approved after the text amendment, then an appeal period will be in place. So if that's clear to everyone, then I can continue with the staff report.
So Heather, do we know when the City Council is going to see this text amendment?
We are taking it to council for first reading in October. Second reading would be in November, and then it would be effective 30 days after that. So the effective date of January 31st, 2015, is just providing enough time, you know, considering, you know, if the project, or if the tax amendment needs to be continued, if there's not enough council members there on a specific night, or that allows for room to do that, and-
I was thinking about attending the City Council meeting to make sure that they understand how much we care about this. So do you know the date of that meeting?
It's, I'm sorry, it's been noticed for the 14th.
The 14th? Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Then I'll just continue on with the staff report unless there's any other questions.
Yeah, thanks, Heather. Sorry to interrupt.
That's okay. So this item has been continued from, as you noted, August 20th, on September 3rd and September 17th Planning Commission meetings. Originally, the project was recommended by staff for disapproval. When it came in front of the Planning Commission on August 20th, the Planning Commission requested staff to return with a resolution of approval with the finding that the project was submitted prior to the ordinance 840 being effective, which hence is the zone tax amendment that you just recommended approval on. The September 3rd and September 17th meetings, we, staff did bring back the resolution for approval. However, we requested continuance because staff did not vet the project through the development review process for conditions, and this was going to allow staff more time to do that. So staff has now taken it through the process, received conditions from the Public Works Department, the Fire Department, and any other agencies that would be conditioning this project. All those conditions have been included in staff's report and resolution. Most notable of those conditions is a condition that requires the applicant, and let me just read verbatim so I don't screw it up. This is under Public Works, "That prior to building permit issuance, the Public Works Director shall review the proposed site access design with respect to the Public Works Department's designs for future realignment of the intersection of Signal Street and Grand Avenue to minimize traffic safety impacts and maintain pedestrian and vehicular safety and welfare. Current access of off-the-curve section of Signal Street between Summer Street and Grand Avenue is not ideal for safety and conflicts with proposed improvements. Moving the driveway cut to Signal Street above Grand Avenue may be required." This is a condition that's been placed on the project. The project proposes a driveway off of that curved portion of Signal, and the Public Works Director would like to review that prior to the building permit issuance. Other than that, there are no other conditions that staff would like to note, but the applicant is here and I'm sure would like to speak to the conditions.
And if I can, I'd just like to give a little background on how we do conditions of approval. Often, what's incorporated in the condition of approval, staff goes through the Ojai zoning ordinance. We take out anything we believe is pertinent, so some of them are code sections that are reiterated, added to the conditions of approval. And we do that so the applicant knows, and it's fully vetted through him, what he needs to show when he submits to a building plan. So even though they're listed as conditions, many of what appear in his conditions of approval are code, and so if there's something that you wish to modify, then you need to ask staff if it's at your discretion, if it's actually a condition or code. Many of them, we try, I've tried to put the code section in there. Some of them are standard conditions that you see in all projects, and so I know there was a question about the length of this document, but, you know, we don't have anybody here from Fire if you had questions about them, but we do have the Public Works Director here. So we just want to let you know that we try very diligently to make a comprehensive list of conditions that a person can use as a checklist to make sure that their building plans come in with it the first time around, rather than saying, "Oh, you didn't see this section of the code. You didn't see that section of the code." So some of them are codes, some of them are conditions, and I just wanted to make sure you understood that.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for staff? Anyone? Mike?
I'm going off the old one. I was just wondering about, it was section, it was under the conditions of approval in the Community Development Department. I'm looking at the revised one. Forgive me, I'm not, okay. Number five in the revised one on page three is six. It says, "The project site is approximately eight acres in size, and one legal lot makes in the maximum density for the project site one single family dwelling unit and one second dwelling unit. Any future proposal for additional residential structures on the site shall be accompanied by a request for a subdivision in accordance with the city's general plan and R.O. zoning district." I'm just wondering if that's a necess, like what if the, going back to other conditions, further future conditions which may allow the, like the flux house the applicant was talking about, I mean, is that a necessary condition? Would that preclude that in the future?
Go ahead. Sorry. Yeah, essentially it would. Right now, the project site has one dwelling unit on site, and it would be, if there was a main dwelling unit, also it would be considered second dwelling unit because it has a kitchen facility. So with approval of the main residential unit and the existence of the unit on site, he already has one dwelling unit and a second dwelling unit. Does that answer your question?
No, I don't think that answers. I guess to be, to make it clear, if I believe what I understand what you're trying to say is that I think you could, you could put something in there, you know, put a caveat that says unless, you know-
Superseded by future code or something like that?
Yeah, something like that. I think if that's what you're worried about, I think that would be appropriate. I mean, it is what it is now, and we're trying to make it very clear for him, but yeah, I think that'd be appropriate.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions for staff? Could we hear from the applicant, please?
Good evening. Nice to see you again. This is a really happy evening for my family. We're happy that we got to this point in the process. We're meeting at an approval design review tonight and appreciate the approval of the text amendment, which moves our project that much closer to fruition. The next question was of interest to me also, because as a point of fact, the property is actually two lots, and one of the things, one of the strategies that we talked about was on the potential, and I'm not saying we are applying for this because we have basically thrown in the towel on the flux house, but theoretically, we could do a lot line adjustment because it is two lots, and we could, and I hope, again, I hope that the condition is not creating a greater burden in the future that exists with the property right now. We did not want to pursue a subdivision because of the complexity and cost and time of that. The lot line adjustment is a less glamorous process, still time-consuming and expensive, but in theory, I don't want to take something off the table that would possibly, that we could theoretically in the future do. The little cabinets on the property now is our primary dwelling. My wife and children are living there on there three or four days a week. The kitchen basically consists of a unit a little bit bigger than this in what was the coat closet, so if that returned to its previous condition as an accessory building, it's not a dwelling, it's not really a dwelling per se. But, so I guess my comment would be to reiterate what MAC was saying, was that we don't want to add something that creates a new limitation on the property that doesn't exist now, and that as a point of fact, the property is two lots, not one. So, secondly, the, on page three, under the Community Development Department conditions, number 15, I don't believe that our project should be subject to this condition, but my understanding of that ordinance is that it doesn't apply to a single-family dwelling with less than 5,000 square feet of landscaping, and we have submitted our landscape plans and project description earlier that we are not doing 5,000 square feet or more of a dedicated landscape, and we intend to maintain the naturalistic quality of the property. And so submitting, being required to submit a landscape plan, I believe is a strenuous condition. It is a significant amount of work, and work always pays costs, and so that's my request that that condition be included because it's two lots. The, thirdly, the first condition of the Public Works Department, I sent a letter, which I think is in your pocket, to the commission regarding this. I did get a call from Heather and Detective Greg on August 28th to discuss the proposed people by the Signal-Grand Street intersection. This is described as a realignment of Signal Street, addition of a bike lane, and adding accessories. I was asked if we would like to move our driveway from the existing curb section of Signal, and this is the point, we're not proposing the driveway on the curb section of Signal. It's always been there, and as we just described earlier, this property is perhaps 100 years old, and this has always been the access to the property. It's not nothing new. I was asked, so Greg said that the cost, presumably, but I learned socially, that we would be responsible for the cost of bridging the existing drainage culprit on Signal would be mitigated by a mystery increase in the length of our driveway up to the property. I asked to see the intersection design, but that has not been disclosed to us. At 7:00 last night, I got a sketch from the intersection design, and I've copies of that. Wouldn't be a meeting without handouts. Let's see if I need to pick up ten. I need one myself. So after five months of discussion and negotiation, we finally learned about this intersection design. I saw it at 7:00 last night. And so Mr. Grant referred me to a January 7th, 2010, email from Glenn Hawkes about this intersection design. And this was about, I don't know, I don't remember the exact date of close nest girl, but it was in the late fall of 2009, and, you know, maybe November, I think, something like that. So this is almost five years ago, and maybe two months after we bought the property, where we were clearing the property, getting rid of homeless encampments, trash, basically making the property completely safe and accessible to ourselves. And the note that I got from Glenn Hawkes said, Fred, historically, it was a plan to redesign the Signal-Grand intersection, and this was the basis of the current right-of-way line reflected on your survey map, and you see that as this first illustration. I presume your survey will be filed as a record survey since PLS caps replaced. You will need a city encroachment permit for any work within the current right-of-way. As part of the permit, the city would require future removal of any improvements within the right-of-way. Should there be ever a city project to complete the realignment of Signal-Grand intersection to match the current right-of-way? This is not likely in the near future, and any proposal you put forth to improve your driveway entrance would be considered. It is not- It is not likely the city to participate in improvements or landscaping. See the attached aerial photo here, please contact. So I don't think there's anything in here which is warning me that we, our driveway would be relocated. So in the last five months, in order to have a complete application, we had to submit a site plan with the driveway. And so we hired a surveyor to survey the realignment, a landscape architect to design it, civil engineer to design it, an arborist to give a report on the driveway, moving the driveway, to go through the lead view of this growth, and my own architectural staff's time. So I've incurred thousands of dollars of design services to comply with the city's application requirements. And there was no mention that this would be in conflict with the intersection redesign. So what is the intersection, the third illustration that I handed out? In my discussions with Heather and Greg, the issues which were reiterated tonight included the safety of the intersection. And I asked Greg, is there any history of accidents at this intersection? And he said, no, there's not. And we've lived on the property for almost five years, and I calculated, I'm sorry, I'm quantitatively oriented, that between my wife and I, we've gone minimum in and out of that driveway 2,000 times. And I would not in any way characterize it as a unsafe intersection. My son, Henry, and I love to go for bike rides, choose that bike way. I think it's great that the city is putting the bike way in and extending it. But the, as you can see from the realignment, it barely affects the, our driveway entrance. The other, so we, as a, we discussed the issue of safety of the existing driveway. In the five years that we have been on the property, my wife and I have ingressed or egressed at least 2,000 times. Traffic density is low in this area, and noted that the existing curb cut allows clear view east along Grand and south along Signal. I would not in any way characterize that section of road or our driveway onto it as dangerous. In order to complete our application for DRP, we hired a landscape architect, civil engineer, arborist, an architect from my staff, head surveyor, to design a driveway from the existing curb cut on Signal to a new alignment to improve the view. Our landscape architect wonderfully observed that when you walked through the Uclitus Grove on the south end of our property, it is virtually a California Impressionist painting. It's almost identical to a very famous California Impressionist painting. And so that's why we actually went to the trouble of adjusting the alignment slightly to go straight through that Uclitus Grove, look up at the mountains, and then turn back to the original alignment. In that conversation, I stated that we had carefully at that significant cost designed our driveway from the long existing location, maybe 100 years, and we would rather not abandon that for what we consider a much less desirable access. Staff report of September 10th was made available on September 12th. Concerned about the continued delays and uncertain timeframe, I placed calls to the assistant planner, planning director, and city manager, not receiving any return calls. I stopped into the planning office late on the 12th, and the director was kind enough to see me without a fight on. I described our intense concern over the approval timeframe and uncertain process described in the new report. I also expressed concern over the new issue of the intersection redesign and what that might mean to us. Director called me the following Wednesday, told me that she had spoken to the city engineer, and that the plans of the intersection were unresolved and not imminent. She said that our planning approval would not be conditioned with the intersection design, and that the approval resolution would be cleared. But in fact, the resolution released on September 26th conditions the issuance of a building permit, public works item number one, on review by the public works director with respective public works permits designed for the future realignment of the intersection. Why did not staff disclose the pending intersection realignment earlier in this lengthy process? Why doesn't the planning direct, public works director disclose the design as requested? I now have that as of seven o'clock last night. Is it, is this planning, is this intersection design reviewed by the planning commission? There's an issue, some investment on my part revealed that there was $4,000 in capital fund, and that's why in 1213, so just as a way of confirming to myself that the staff must have been aware of this redesign. And yet, we were obliged to spend thousands of dollars on a driveway design that the staff knew was possibly irrelevant. What I, I could not find funds for the improvement, but I talked to Greg yesterday, and he said that actually there were funds in place for that realignment. We would like clarity on this issue. We would like the opportunity for input on that intersection design. And most of all, we would like a clear path to approvals and permits so we can build our home. I'm very concerned that this condition will provide a situation of indefinite lengthening of our ability to get our building permit. And I wonder if there's a way of separating, obviously, there's something in the works. There must be some kind of a process for that, and we would like to participate in that process. But I, we're very concerned about having our building permit held hostage for the location of our driveway access, which I think could take some time to sort out. We waited a long time, and this action tonight is, you know, a wonderful step forward for us, but is a, something that was very alarming to us, and we thought we had been told that it was not going to be a condition, and now it's a condition, and was very concerned about it. There was a particular note about the 150-foot distance of a driveway from an intersection. And again, as somebody that's quantitatively oriented, I thought, that seems like a long way. So every Sunday, I walk down from our property to the farmer's market, and I'm, you know, doing this for 35 years, I'm actually pretty good at pacing off dimensions. So I have to say, these are not measured dimensions, but I would say they're 90% correct. I counted between what, from our property to Matilla, over to the market, back up Lion, to Grand, and back to our house, just those two streets, 40 driveways, four zero, 40 driveways, were less than 150 feet from their adjacent intersection. And so I feel like, you know, our, you know, it seems like because we're trying to get building permit, we're being singled out for a condition that is actually, doesn't conform, doesn't, is not consistent with the reality of downtown Ojai. What if one walked up and down all the streets in Ojai, I bet you would find actually the majority of the driveways are less than 150 feet from their neighboring intersections. So I understand that that can, that the driveway needs to be reviewed by public works, involved in that process. But again, I would say that we respectfully hope that that doesn't become something that captures our building permit and prohibits us from moving forward with that while that is all. Thank you very much.
Okay. So, Mr. Fisher, you, is there any change in the driveway with the plans that you have for the house? I don't, I don't recall seeing any, but...
The driveway, the driveway curb cut that exists now, which was built by the city, because our property line is actually about 20 feet back from the curb line, the sidewalk, and we act, there's another curb cut for an adjacent property also on that curb. It's a rather long curb, it's like 250 feet. We're using the same driveway curb cut on our plan. The current driveway runs about parallel to the property and then winds its way gently up the hill to the top, if those of you have been on the property. What we, our proposal, which has been on our submittal all along, is to basically tilt the driveway through the Uclitus Grove to capture this very beautiful view, and then swing back and get back on the original driveway alignment. So it's a minor deviation for purely picturesque reasons, purely aesthetic reasons, which we were really thrilled that our landscape architect had found that view, and which is, we created a very lovely visual sequence when we came on the property. The new alignment, the alignment that was being talked about, is moving the driveway onto Signal north of Grand, would basically take us around the corner on that, forgive the owner is here, ugly apartment building, parking lot, carport, and then turning across traffic. And, I mean, in terms of safety, that forces us to make a left-hand turn across Signal. And there's, I, again, being on the property for a long time, I know that there's a lot of pedestrians, walkers, bikers, people going up to the trailhead. And so we would then have to cut across all that traffic, and then create a new bridge across the drainage culvert, and then face the other apartment buildings as we enter our apartment, our property, and then drive along, and then get back up to our property. So aesthetically, it's, you know, tremendous compromise. I would, I know this is not the forum, I would at some, at the appropriate forum, wish to at least have the possibility of discussing the reality of the issues of safety of that intersection. And so, long story short, that there's, the driveway aperture is the same as it's always been.
Yeah. So what you're proposing is use the existing curb cut and leave everything the way it is? Okay, good. I'll just say in passing that my experience with public works is that it's a long process before they're gonna make any changes there.
Would you have Mr. Grant?
I know, we do, yeah. Do we have any questions for the applicant? Anybody? No? We know everything we need to know, I guess. All right. Mr. Grant, I know you're here, do you, do you want to talk on this issue at all? I don't know that we necessarily need any input, but...
Good evening, pressure. Um...
It's working? Can you hear for this?
It is?
Okay.
I don't know, I guess I would like to maybe address, do we have a slide that shows the what the intersection is like?
We need the next slide up?
Yeah.
If this is not working...
I guess our old system, you could point it with a laser.
Yeah.
No, that's cool. Laser doesn't work on this, can you...
Yeah. Anyway, we do have, Mr. Fisher gave us a handout that has the...
Yeah. Okay. Does that help?
That's pretty helpful.
Okay.
So I guess what I want to address is that I understand, I, as we were talking, looking at the file, it appeared that back in 2010, when we moved into the property, you were aware of some issues there. So I guess, all depending on how you read the memorandum, the email, you could interpret that in different ways, but it seemed to be fairly clear. When I, I thought, when I read it, it was saying that as part of the permit, the city would require future removal of any improvements within the public right-of-way, should there ever be a city project complete realignment of Signal Grand intersection. So, I mean, unfortunate as we are, we have obtained this grant, even though I heard that one comment about us maybe not moving too quickly with these projects, but I think the difficulty can be to secure funding. So in this case, we have secured a TDA grant, which will assist in realignment of that intersection. Really, it's, I guess, fairly obvious, it's a little hard to point, I guess.
The next slide?
Does the next slide show a bit more? Can you advance another one? Yeah, this shows it here.
Yeah. That's the one we have in our handout.
So I think, anyways, you can kind of see there that the issue really is when, I think anybody here knows, when you come around the corner, upper Signal, the southbound lane directs you right into the southbound lane. It's not the safest situation, and I think that's nothing new. Fortunately, there has not been much accident history there. I don't have the full accident history, but there hasn't been much. But if there ever was an accident, the city's in a terrible position, as you can imagine, for liability. We would have a hard case to be made of how, why was there an alignment for two lanes coming right together in a situation like that. So we have obtained the grant to realign it, and part of that grant was to promote the use of bicycles and pedestrian usage. So it includes a bicycle lane on both sides of the street. So we would propose on the east side that the curb and gutter and sidewalk remain as is, and on the west side, it be shifted over. And this is a concept design, there's some neighbors that have expressed concern about this may be a smoother transition that could speed up traffic. So we're considering actually making a sharper 90, which would push it over into a sharper 90-degree curve up on the top side. It actually adds cost to the project as well, so we're looking at that. So in regards to the driveway cut, there is two driveway cuts on that corner already. One of them accesses the back of some houses down on Summer, and something else there. And so it's just not an ideal location. It's true that when you exit this driveway, you can see down Grand reasonably well, and you can see down Signal, but it's common practice to always have a driveway cut squared off to the street so you can see best through your car. And whenever you pull up in an angle, you're dealing with a frame of your car that blocks line of sight towards other cars, so that becomes an unsafe situation. That's exactly what happens here, is you pull up and your frame, depending on which car you're driving, is so on, can be difficult to see to the south. There, it, there's enough confusion there that when you pull up now, as a person exiting the property, you've got to look at, is somebody coming down off of south, off of North Signal coming southbound and cutting in towards you? Is there traffic on Grand? It can be pretty fast. It's probably our busiest arterial street in the city, besides, you know, the main road of Ojai Avenue. So a lot of traffic coming at you from Grand or Signal. And then you've got people coming up Signal, pretty heavy use on northbound side, as well as turning, I think everybody recognizes that a lot of the residents in town cut up Kenyatta and come over on Summer as a cut through, right, to get up onto Grand Avenue. So between all that, there's not the best safety for the person exiting the driveway, as well as anybody on, the residents who are just driving on Grand Avenue in either direction, it's not the safest for anybody. So all in all, it just didn't seem ideal, and that's, I think, when I first contacted Mr. Fisher, I thought he would agree that that seemed like, you know, I just assumed they'd already had the driveway there, but we looked at it, and is there a plan that shows the total length of the driveway? Because it would actually save a couple hundred feet roughly of the driveway length.
Passed it through by, that's right there.
Passed it through?
It's the planning commission or something.
Okay, they have it. So roughly, is that on the slides there?
No.
No? Okay. But, yeah, driveway, if it was aligned up on North Signal, if you went up roughly 150 feet or so, that would shorten the driveway significantly, 150 feet or so, I'm not sure what the length was.
Almost.
Could be as much as 200, and have to be extended a bit more. So maybe overall savings are over 100 foot of length. So I thought it would be an obvious win-win, because it'd be safer for the person exiting or entering the driveway, because you can imagine going northbound, if you have to wait to turn left, now you've stopped right in the middle of the... to turn left, now you've stopped right in the middle of that Signal Street area, which is not the safest as it is. And I think Mr. Fisher indicated they often take Summer over to line and come back and always make a right in there, which is ideal, but I don't know if that works for contractors, visitors, and everybody else that might access the property. So, for a lot of reasons, it seemed best to move it up there, and I understand there's some concerns about the aesthetics that he's mentioned there, that he might prefer to have it there, but for safety, you'd want to be squared off to the intersection, which would happen up on Signal, and it would be safer entering and exiting the property. There's even the impacts of the bicyclist, you can imagine coming around that corner. That's one more thing for them to deal with, if somebody's coming and going. I know just today, when I stopped by, there was a contractor up on the property with a truck and a trailer, and when they pulled out of that driveway, they couldn't make the turn hard enough, so they were pulling into the northbound Signal Street, which slowed the traffic there. And there's already enough confusion, that just didn't look ideal, and it really reinforced what I was thinking about when I was heading over to the meeting. So, I think those were most of the reasons, if that wasn't enough, and that, I guess, beyond that, we have mentioned that there is a code section which requires that driveways be at least 150 foot from the nearest intersection, or there's provisions to be less. Obviously, a lot of lots are only 50 to 75 foot wide, so you can't do that. And certainly, that's not on the historic driveways all through town. There's just not an option to do that. But if possible, you keep them away from the intersections. If it's a stop intersection, it's not so important, but it's certainly, if a case where it's a non-stop, it becomes much more important. So, it's -- the intention there, I think, is just safety, to keep it away from the intersection. And that, yeah, the fact that we do have this underway, I also question whether or not the driveway would be built in there, and then we're talking about coming in and doing this improvement. So, you might have a condition where -- or a situation, I should say, when the new driveway would be built in there, and then we're talking about relocating everything very soon afterwards. This project is -- the funding is just being released, and so, it'll be designed this year with public outreach and should be constructed in next summer. So, it's all pretty imminent coming together, and I guess I was just hoping that the savings for that less road, 150 foot, would more than pay for -- there is a roadside ditch there you have to bridge, which is roughly five, six feet wide. So, it's a pretty simple reinforced concrete or steel plate that would go over a ditch like that, relatively inexpensive, and I think safer for everyone. So, that's it. If you have any questions.
Thank you. Well, I guess our focus tonight is really trying to get Mr. Fisher's building permit, and it seems to me like this is a whole separate project, this whole driveway realignment, road realignment, all that. I mean, as Public Works Department, do you -- I mean, does it matter to you guys? If we approve this with the plans the way they are, then, I mean, they may change in the future, but, I mean...
Oh, if you approve the driveway the way it is?
Yeah.
I was really trying to condition that instead of wasting the time and effort to build a brand-new driveway, because it's not the same alignment as it is as a new driveway, that we just go ahead and condition it to be built over to Signal Street and be done with it. Once it's built down to Signal, I think it's momentum and money spent in that way, and I think it'll be more difficult to -- there'll be a lot of pushback to try to keep it where it's at, another reason. Let's just condition it and have it as a done deal at this time, is what I'd recommend to the commission.
I see what you're saying. Okay. Well, I appreciate the work you guys are gonna do there, because I ride my bike through there a lot. I don't know. Do we need any more input from Mr. Grant?
I have a question.
Yeah.
So, are you saying that you'd like to move the cut for his driveway for his safety, or are you saying that it also would negatively impact your ability to do this project?
I would say it's for the applicant, the resident's safety, the public's safety, and it creates less confusion in the project. So, there's probably three parts of that.
Because to me, it seems like it's not safer for him to be dead stopped right there on that curve to Signal and have to go left there. To me, that's where -- that's not, to me, safer. It seems like he would just get rear-ended trying to take a left on Signal with the way people come careering around there. So, that's one thing. And then, there -- I mean, people do come roaring down Signal, but they have to stop. They do have to stop there. So, I don't know. It always seems like there's pedestrians scurrying across there, and, I mean, I guess to me, at best, it's six of one, half a dozen of the other for safety. How would it negatively impact the actual project for him to have his driveway there?
Safety. Safety for a bicyclist after, if they saw a car exiting the driveway, they pull up and they've got to see a car sitting there and have to consider what they're doing. And it's best for bicyclists, when they have a bike path, to have a defined left edge, kind of a fog line between the travel lane of the car as well as the bike. And on the right side, it's best to have a defined area. When you've got changing conditions, driveway cuts and all that, you add another potential problem for them to be dealing with. And I get, yeah, the left-hand turn into Signal, as you go northbound on Signal and you want to turn left onto northbound Signal, is something we're looking at in the design to see if we can have a turn pocket placed in there, see if we have enough space for it, and that would help avoid that stopped car turning left. But all that stuff adds into the confusion of trying to exit a driveway there. It's better to get it away from the confusion of this intersection, one less component of confusion, and try to move it up on Signal, 100 feet, 150 feet or so.
Is that a quick comment, too? If the design remained as is, the Public Works project, the applicant or his family, if they were coming out of their driveway and they wanted to go, let's say, up to the trails, you'd have to go down to Summer, do some kind of maneuver to get to go back up Signal. And then, also, if you wanted to make a right, well, let's see. I think that would probably be the biggest obstacle. You might have to put a U-turn in there or a turning lane somewhere. I don't know. Just a comment.
Are you talking about the medium?
Yeah.
Not being able to -- what is that medium? Explain that. What's it? Is it rye? Is it flushed to the ground? Is it planted? And what's in the medium? Is it just a chalk mark? Is it...
It's a concept design at this time, which we've worked out. I mean, ideally, it's a solid concrete curb, and it's gonna have landscaping in the center of it. It'd be low landscaping to help, you know, of course, to avoid visual impacts or line of sight issues.
Right. So, the applicant won't be able to make a left out of his driveway?
They would merely make a left in that way. Because there'll be an extra-wide intersection by holding the curb on the right as it is and moving the other one to the left. Yeah. So, it's a way to kind of take up that additional space and try to improve safety of that area. And that's where it would tie into the left-hand turn, if we can make that left-hand turn lane. So, is it kind of, I guess it goes back to that question. People who go up Signal, at least when they go up and they make a left-hand turn, they can see clearly down Grand. If you stop in the middle of that area, can you see properly down Grand? I mean, there's a lot of vegetation at that corner that's difficult to see through and other things. So, it's a little complicated there. And it's an arterial street, so you're also dealing with daily volumes of around 6,000 vehicles per day versus up on Signal, it's probably in the 1,000 range. It's probably one-sixth, roughly, the range.
Stephen, Joe.
I just want to make sure I understand that the purpose of this, right now, I'm seeing it as twofold. It's serving as a traffic calming device. It's gonna slow traffic down coming around that corner, and I think we all know that corner well, and it's rather intense in terms of speed and that sort of thing. So, I get that. But the other factor was, and I think this may be tied to our Complete Streets program, was to encourage bicyclists and pedestrian walkthroughs there. And does that pretty much summarize the intent of this? Is there something you could add to that that would... I mean, you have mentioned safety, but I think maybe that all relates to that.
Promotes bicycle use. With bike trail going through there, a bike lane. It promotes traffic calming, and it promotes a safer realignment of North Signal to South Signal on each side of Summer Street.
Just wanted to make a -- go ahead.
No, go ahead. Well, it appears with that medium there that he's got difficulties in both directions, you know, coming into his house up, coming up Signal, making a left. He can't get into his property that way. He has to make a U-turn, or in no way can he make a left on Grand. So, that's a pretty difficult situation there. I would say if the city's committed to that medium, I would ask the applicant, well, I guess he's wanting to be -- he wants to participate in that process of the concept design, because the medium right there is what, you know, stop prevents him from actually using it.
And you would have a whole kind of design process for this, right?
Right.
It'll be outreach with the community and how that's handled. Yeah.
I guess you could do a break, couldn't you, even in the medium?
For the driveway?
Ingressing...
No.
Not at all?
That'd be difficult. If it was a striped, you know, lane striped, which is nowhere as near substantial as a traffic calming or separation device, obviously, you have striping there, it's not substantial. But that's one option, much less expensive, but the curb design is not too bad, and aesthetically, it's better appearance as well.
You did that.
It's really, so this is a concept. It was developed for the grant submittal that we had, and so, we've got, you know, outreach to finalize it and decide exactly how sharp a corner is and what everything looks like there and squeeze the lanes in. And that includes a grant to provide bike lanes or charols all the way down Grand Avenue and a multi-use bike trail on the south side of Grand Avenue as well.
Right. I just want to make another comment. So, we've been -- we looked at this at Complete Streets and actually worked with Greg on this, not knowing about your project, unfortunately, but we've been working on it for a long time. And I might add that over the years, there's been people coming to city council, talking about an intersection, and with Complete Streets, we actually went out and did walkability index data gathering, and we did quite, you know, monitoring at that intersection with speeds and observation counts and what have you. So, it is a hotspot, even though there hasn't been any, I believe, recorded accidents, but there's been a lot of near, almost accidents, I should say. So...
Greg, could you... Could you address the 150 foot from the intersection condition?
Your plans are...
It's number 10 on the conditions of approval.
And the revised?
And the revised, yes.
Yeah, the revised. I guess.
So, I don't know. Does everybody have a set of plans that look like this?
No. I just have that one.
Okay. So, the municipal code requires that driveway shall be located a minimum 150 feet from the nearest intersection, as measured from the centerline of the driveway. So, that's the code, and it allows for 100 foot if there's lesser space, or obviously, if the lot doesn't have the room, then it's got to be within lot space. So, there's provisions for the city engineer to allow shorter distances on that.
So, how does that actually read graphically in this case? Are we...
In this case, it would move it from the corner where Grand and Signal come together, and it'd go up 100 to 150 foot from that point.
It's actually on that line, that northerly line of the street that you would measure from at the intersection of the two?
Yeah. They actually saved from the centerline, so...
From the centerline?
Right.
Yeah, not the centerline of Grand, but the...
I think it is from Grand. I think it's...
Because Grand's a rather wide street, right?
It's measured from the centerline of the driveway to the centerline of the nearest travel land of the intersecting streets. So, it'd be from the centerline of Grand up 150 foot. So, Grand is roughly 40 foot wide, so that would be 20 foot from the beginning of Signal, and then it'd be up another 130 foot from there. And that's, I think that's a particularly long lot here, so we're talking about, I've got the plan here, but it appears, yeah, the lot length on Signal is 700 foot long, approximately. It's actually more, there's a dimension here of 700 that goes close, but it appears to be another 80 feet or so. So, anyway, it's a good 750 foot of lot length, and I think they were hoping to have it approached more on the south, the way they've got their driveway set up. But the proposed alignment off of that position on the corner of Grand and Signal, it used to go more up, drift off to the left, or to the, I guess this is to the northwest, and instead, they're coming, they're going directly north and then cutting over. So, where they go directly north, it parallels up along Signal, the ditch on Signal, and then it breaks to the left. And what I was proposing, and that's why I originally thought that this would be just a good idea for all, would be that, if you can see this, here's Signal Street. Here's Signal Street going up. Here's the curb. So, the existing roadway goes this way up to the house. The proposed roadway is this darker line, and it goes up and cuts over. So, right here is where it could easily come through any place in this area. It shortens the length here, this distance, to roughly half of it.
So, at that particular radius there, that would meet the 150-foot requirement if he was to bring it over to Signal from that point?
Yeah, if it came over this way. Right.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
And I think there's provisions for, especially when there's a stop, an adjacent stop, there's provisions for decreasing that to 100 foot.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Grant. Appreciate it. Where are we? This is a public hearing. Would anybody else like to speak on this? I think we're okay on that. Could we have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'd like to make a motion when we close the public hearing.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right. Finally get to discuss this. Kathleen, I really see these two things separate. I mean, the building permit that we're talking about for the house, I don't see where, how the driveway meets Grand is really part of that project. I mean, I know it's on the plans and everything, but I mean, is there some way we can disconnect those things so that...
Okay. So, before you tonight is this design review permit, and as part of the design review permit, there's a long laundry list of things that an applicant has to show. One of them's the driveway. So, it is very much an integrated part of this permit. I was just going to offer a couple things. I think that we should delete Condition 6, where, you know, it's, we put that in as part of the issue with this particular project, has been a repeated issue of information and informing the applicant of all the codes applicable to him. That was really informational. If people think that that's more problem than it is informational, staff's fine with you deleting that one, where it talks about the project... Oh, I'm sorry. It's Project, oh, sorry. It's number five on the revised. I gave the Public Works Director my revised. I'm sorry. Okay. So, we're fine with that. I would like to also mention that as the applicant was notified over four years ago, if he, if the driveway stays where it is, he'll be removing it, and I think everyone made that very clear. He requires an encroachment permit, and conditions of the encroachment permit are standard, that when the city no longer wants those improvements there, they tell you to remove them. And I think you can ask Greg that, but that was very clear in what was provided to the applicant four years ago. So, you know, I just wanted you guys to understand that he does, part of his driveway actually goes on public right-of-way out to the public streets. So, I want to make sure you understand that particular requirement. And then, as far as, I want to just clarify the issue with the landscape permit plan. No one is saying he needs to do it compliant with all the regulations. When we say compliant with Title, Section 10.2, 12.02, just means he has to demonstrate that he isn't meeting the 5,000, and if he does that... So, when we do zoning, when he pulls his building permit, we do zoning compliance review. Again, it was put in there as informational purposes because there's been a lot of issues with this. So, it's just the idea that he has to show us that he's below 5,000. We're not asking him to do water efficiency or anything like that, because compliant with this just means, the first trigger is, are you 5,000 or are you not? And if he can demonstrate that he's under 5,000 in landscape plans, we're fine with it. But again, if you take that one off, we're still gonna do the same review. It's really just informational purposes, and it was not intended to circumvent anything about the threshold with 5,000, but just to make him aware that he needs to submit something that shows he's compliant. And if all his compliance is, I'm 4,999, we're fine with that. So, we're just trying to make sure that he has everything... So we're just trying to make sure that he has everything available to him, as much as humanly possible from staff to know what he has to submit, so we don't go through this, I didn't know, I needed to submit that.
So you would need a plan that just says that here's the landscape area and it's less than 5,000 square feet?
We need a plan that says, here's the landscape areas, here's what we're going to irrigate, or here's what we're going to, we're planning on landscaping, and here's the dimensions of those and they equal this amount and it's less than 5,000. That's all. It's just informational...
You don't care what actually goes in that area?
No, because he's not, he's not triggered to do that until he's over 5. So we're just trying to put everything together, so there's no surprises when he gets into the, but that's why it's worded that way. It's not worded that showing water efficient, you know, we're just telling him, and if you want to take it off, we'll still do the same thing. It'll still be the same zoning conformance review. But that was, that was the issue, is just to be informational for him.
All right. Thank you. Another discussion?
Yes.
Well, you know, now that I, now that we've gotten into all these conditions, I do, I do think it's very helpful, you know, coming, I mean, I think it's, I think it's a good thing. I think it's a culmination of a lot of things that staff has been working on because I think it does lay out everything. And like you said, it's like, oftentimes we hear, well, I didn't know this or I didn't know that. So I think this is a good step in the direction of like saying, well, here's everything. Now, I also think, I also appreciate Greg Grant's, you know, forward-lookingness and looking out for the future of the streets and all that. And I know you maybe felt a little bit on the defensive with this, but I just, I appreciate your input on that. But I think I would maybe tend to agree with Chair Merk a little bit, that I don't know if this is actually the, a condition to be a part of the building permit, is how I feel.
Whether, whether the, I mean, I don't know if there's a mechanism to remove, I mean, obviously there's a mechanism to remove these condition because we just did. But even if this condition was removed, I think I heard Mr. Grant say that there's going to be significant pushback anyway, and he, and he would only be able to build the existing driveway with an encroachment permit anyway. So if he built it and they go ahead with this plan, then he's out of luck anyway, whether it's conditioned or not.
So, yes, anytime he needs that last section of the driveway that goes over the public right-of-way, and you can't do work in the city's right-of-way without an encroachment permit. And standard conditions are, you know, you have a liability policy for, you know, you can dimify the city. And then there's a standard condition that's usually applied on all encroachment permits that say, at such a time the city doesn't want your improvements there, you'll remove them because it's just kind of, it's not by right that you have that, it's a permit, okay? So, yes, and then like, the only other thing that I would say is that it is, the sections that are cited in here about the length of the driveway and it's, I mean, I'm sorry, the distance from the intersection is code. And the only one that is allowed to deviate from that is by the city engineer. And standard practice would be that an applicant would submit a, study by a traffic engineer demonstrating that his proposed driveway is somehow equal to or not, or as safe as what the, you know, that there's not a reduction in safety. And it's usually not done anecdotally, like, you know, I drive this or I count that, but it's done by a traffic engineer. And so if you were to suggest that it stay where it is and against the advice of the public works director, then usually that's done on the recommendation that he provide documentation from a traffic engineer that studies it. And then that professional will say, based on professional, you know, criteria, that it's a safe place for that driveway to be. So, you know, not, not, not an anecdotal thing of I drove or I counted or I felt, or even as you said, I know it's, those kind of things are all valid, but we would ask it be by a technical professional to demonstrate that it's, that's the safe place for it to be, you know. So that's what normally, and you can call Mr. Grant back up and ask him, but that's what, you know, either, like he says he has a certain leeway to go from 150 down to 100, but this is right in the middle of the intersection and so for him, there he is, so he can talk, he can talk for himself.
I thought I'd mention that I think it'd be fairly unreasonable for us to imply to the applicant that it's okay to put the driveway where it is now. And then when we do the project, ask him to realign a couple hundred foot and rebuild it up there. I think if it's decided right now, it's over with. There's a savings of a substantial part of that driveway. There is a ditch which has to be crossed and that's some money, but I think it'd be more than offset by the savings in the length of driveway. But to come in later and say, okay, now we've done this project, so we want you to realign your driveway a couple hundred feet, would be unreasonable for the city to take that position. So I think I, I wouldn't feel right about that when we issued the encroachment permit to force that.
Mr. Fisher?
I actually have a question for Commissioner Nolan concerning Complete Streets. This was reviewed by Complete Streets, it's my understanding, and it was very favorably looked upon.
Yeah, actually, I think we started, almost, I don't know if it was even up to two years ago, started looking at it as a possible, first of all, as a pilot project to do like a road diet and to include, you know, bike lanes and pedestrian access. You know, we even looked at, the city owns a small strip of property on the east side of, you know, the potential of acquiring that adjacent one and doing a park there. So, yeah, we actually worked on it and finally Greg approached us because he had a grant that he could apply for. So he actually came and worked with Complete Streets on that project. And once again, he got the funding and then the next step would be the public outreach, which hasn't happened yet. But anyway, it's in process, I mean, it's, but it's at the beginning of the process.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Anybody want to make a motion on this? Yeah? Right? Okay, good, good. I would love to move this project forward, but...
I don't know, where do we stand on the, on the driveway?
Well, it sounds like the condition, I mean, it's inevitable he's going to have to move the driveway, so why?
But is it?
Yes.
It is, because of everything that Greg just said. The, the city has a plan in motion that is supported and funded that's going into place. With that, you can possibly, you know, tweak the design a little bit, but the city has the engineers, you know, and the research necessary to make their case for a adequately designed condition in that spot, where is the applicant's then going to be charged with the same kind of burden to try to show that his proposal is better than the city's? So that just creates a condition that I think is, I don't know, it doesn't seem like a, something that's going to, it's going to waste a lot of time. I don't see the applicant being successful at that.
So maybe we could, could we condition the project saying the driveway has to exit onto Signal Street, something like that?
I think that you can condition this to, as, what does it say? Prior...
Probably works number two.
Yeah, I wouldn't change it.
Yeah, I think, I don't have that. Do you have that right there? It's number one, right? I think that, I think that you could, you could add the phrase maybe, because it, well, actually I think it's fine because it says, "The public works director shall review the proposed site design access with respect to public works department's design," and that it shall be subject to his discretion. And you leave it up between Greg and him and, you know, I mean, I think it's, it's pretty broadly worded here and I think, there's a lot of leeway for Greg and, you know, he, this is his area of expertise and I think he can work with him on that.
So we could just leave the conditions the way they are?
I think you could, yeah.
But I...
And the condition on the, on the 150 also says that it's as approved by the, you know, I don't, I'm sorry, but it also has some, he has, he as the public works director has discretion with that one too. So I think so. I think that they can work it out and if...
So it'd be something they, they could work out after?
Right. Right. So because there's, as Greg had mentioned, there's a stop sign at the intersection. Perceivably, if the driveway was less than 150 feet, he may say it's fine, it's going to work.
I think it's good.
I think one thing, one thing the applicant was saying though is, was the timeline concern? I'm wondering if we could, or if I could ask Mr. Grant, I mean, how, how long would this take you? Because it's prior to the issuance of a building permit. I mean, so the building permit would be held until this was resolved, so how long do you think it would take?
I can assure you that any kind of driveway or other encroachment permits are extremely fast turnaround, it's a matter of days typically. So it's really, in my mind, a simple realignment of the driveway and there will have to be some kind of simple submittal about what the reinforced concrete or steel bridges over that six-foot ditch, not, not very complex. And as an architect, I'm sure Mr. Fisher could supply that very quickly. So it's a matter of days and I'll assure you that we wouldn't normally, and that certainly in this case will, extra dedication to not delaying it anyway.
Chair, can I ask the director a question?
Sure.
So Greg, could we morph this condition a little bit? So say he was using his existing driveway for the time being and you work, you gave him some leeway to work this out, could he go ahead and issue the building permit as long as the fixed driveway cut is determined before he take, he takes occupancy? I mean, is there a way to, I think that's what you're asking, right? I mean, because we always like to have timing in our conditions, but he does have an existing driveway that he could use for construction purposes, or are you interested in this being changed right away?
I think it's fine.
So if you guys wanted to do that, that's some discretion?
Yeah. So before, before I can see that, sounds fine, it'd be finalized.
I like that.
That's good.
Good, thank you. Thanks, Kathleen.
Chair Merk, did you want to address the community development item number five that the director said she'd be willing to delete that he had an issue?
She did mention that in passing and then, can we strike item five or do we?
I think you can. It's informational purposes and, you know, I think that it, we tried, like I said, the purpose, our goal is to be informational, but I think maybe it might be burdensome. So let's just take it off. It serves its purpose.
All right. Well, once again, I'm willing to entertain a motion.
All right, I'm going to make an attempt here.
All right.
Let me organize myself first. All right. I will make an emotion, a motion that we adopt PC resolution number 1411, approving...
Except the CEQA.
Pardon?
Except the CEQA.
Where am I seeing, oh yeah, excuse me, except the CEQA categorical exemption and adopt PC resolution number 14-11, approving design review permit DRP 14-04, subject to the findings and conditions. And let me go through and read that strikeout, make sure I got, oops, correct here.
Can I ask you to clarify revised?
Yes, so that would be, do I need to say the date on that? Or anyway, so that'd be the revised conditions. I'd actually, just hold on for one second because I'm flipping pages here. I just want to make sure I've got the right strikeout and everything.
This doesn't have a date on it.
Okay, so the revised conditions, there's no date. And we would delete condition number five. What was that?
And modify to prior to...
That's, oh, that's right, modify number two. That's what I was looking for my other sheet, because I think I wrote one on the new one and one on the old one. I apologize for that.
It's item number one on public works.
So, hold on one second. So number one...
This is the public works conditions, right?
Yeah, but I think I'm looking at the wrong one. Is it this one here?
It's page four of six.
Oh, four, that's why I was off. Thank you.
Can I, can I offer some language so you say that the applicant shall be allowed to use this existing driveway cut for construction purposes?
Prior to...
But prior to occupancy shall submit a revised plan and the public works director shall review...
And approve.
Yeah, something, and then how are the languages in here?
New driveway.
But I think he, Mr. Fisher would feel probably a little bit more comfortable if you actually said he's going to use that driveway, so he knows what he can and cannot do.
Right. So, okay, so I did a strike on number five and then under public works department number one, I will add that the applicant may use the existing driveway through construction up until occupancy is allowed and the new, he will have to submit a new driveway designed at that point for the approval of the public works director. Is that close enough?
Is that close enough, Greg? Is there something more you want?
Yeah.
Seems pretty good. But wouldn't we want to say that the new driveway is in use for the occupancy?
Yes, up through occup, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Basically, we're saying no issuance of a certificate of occupancy until the, the new driveway is installed and constructed.
Right.
So he, so it behooves Mr. Fisher to come in earlier, but he needs to know he's not going to get a certificate of occupancy till that driveway is installed.
Correct.
But he can't get his building permit and...
But he can't get the building permit. And then the other one would be condition number 14, and that is the applicant shall submit a landscape plan compliant with section 10-2, 12.02, with the building permit submittal to reflect that the landscape area is under 5,000 square feet.
Also, I wanted to ask if it's okay to put in contingent upon adoption of zone text amendment?
That's in the very beginning, I think.
Well, it's in, so that, but just so the motion shows it's really not approved until...
Do we need that?
Oh, that's true, because, yeah, it had that...
It's in the resolution.
It's in the resolution, so we're covered? Okay, good.
It's very clear in section two.
All right. I think I'll say I'm done.
So, it may be gauche, but I'd like to second that motion. Any further discussion?
Right. I have, I just, again, not to belabor the point, but could I ask Mr. Grant, is there any, is there any possibility that, that that redesign of that intersection will not go through, or is it, is it, as a fellow commissioner said, a done deal? Like, are we, are we boxing the applicant in with a condition that might not be necessary?
I think the likelihood of that intersection going through, the funding has been released. We're waiting for the funds to arrive. So it was already granted and committed to by the granting agency. It's already in our capital improvement program for this fiscal year. I should say, there really was outreach last year when we were applying for the grant. Quite a few of the residents in the area were concerned about it and it was, we went back to Complete Streets. We had quite a few residents, we had a workshop on it, discussed it, so there's been quite a bit of outreach on that as well. So the likelihood is very high. And even if it never went through, that slight chance, I put that in the, you know, less than 5% range roughly. But if it didn't occur, it's still safer to have the driveway up there. It doesn't matter. And I, and I was really just sitting thinking, there has been accidents there. I never got the accident history. It wasn't needed for that grant, but I can think of, just in the few years I've been here, there's been two cars that ran off the road there and I was thinking about it. They've been going down Grand and they missed that corner and so that's part of it is to, we put improved signage in that corner, so I didn't want to say there's no accidents there either.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Could we have a roll call on this, please?
Sure. Lajowski?
Aye.
Giagiallo?
Yes.
Zabilla?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Merk?
Yes.
Nolan?
Yes.
Nicklin?
Yes.
Mr. Fisher, I'm glad to say that your, your application is approved. There's still a lot of contingencies, but, you know, and then it's a messy process, but it's, I appreciate you putting up with us. Look forward to seeing the house built too. I think that would be fabulous. Okay, we're going to move on. We are now on item five, which is a variance, VAR 1401 and design review permit DRP 14-10 to encroach into the side setback for new garage located at 306 McKee Street. Accessory's parcel number 0210011100. The general land use designation of the property is low-density residential LR. The zoning classification is single-family residential, low-density RO1. Could we hear from staff on this, please?
Chair Merk, I'd like to recuse myself.
All right. Commissioner Nicklin would like to recuse himself.
I've had, I've done work for the client, the applicant.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, I need to recuse myself, because I'm the contractor on the project.
All right. So staff, could you enlighten us?
Yes. Good evening, Chair and members of the commission. The item before you is a continued item, I'm sorry, it's, well, it's a, it's an item that the planning commission reviewed on their August 6, 2014 meeting, and was continued to September 3, at which time a motion was made, and that motion failed. And so we have re-noticed the project and are bringing it back to the planning commission to review and make a motion on. Since, since the September 3 meeting, the applicant has come back to staff with a new revised set of plans and project description, which reduces the size of the proposed garage from what was 24 by 20 to a 20 by 20 interior garage space, for a total of 400 square feet, thereby minimizing the encroach into the side yard setback by, well, it makes an encroachment into the side setback of 3.6 feet versus 7 feet, which was originally proposed. In addition to that, the proposed bay windows, which included part of the bathroom, are now being proposed as a cantilever and will not have a foundation encroaching into the side yard setback as they did before. So staff has reviewed these changes and provided findings in the staff report and the resolution that support the proposed variance to recommend approval on the encroachment into the side yard setback and grant a variance of such. And staff was able to make those findings based on the fact that the site, as established back in 1970, was established with a lot width that is smaller than what's allowed by the minimum lot size requirements in this zone. And we took that difference between what is required as a minimum and what is existing, and applied that percentage to the encroachment into the side yard setback. And so we, staff feels that that would be an acceptable encroachment into the side setback of 3.6 feet. Everything else stays the same on the project as proposed. We've provided conditions of approval in the resolution. The applicant has seen those conditions, and I believe is okay with those conditions, but they are in the audience, so if we have questions, we can answer them.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for staff?
I have a question. Is it typical when we have a project like this, where a structure is encroaching under the canopy in an oak tree, to have a full arborist report rather than the discussion that we received that was an addendum to a tree permit from trees that were taken out at an earlier date? Is that customary?
Do you want to? The code requires a full arborist report, and to get a tree permit for any work done in the drip line of an oak or sycamore. And that's, and when they, when they originally did the work, there was work done originally on this project site in the back, I believe in the back behind the house, and there was some stacking and staging of materials underneath that oak tree. And so they were requested to get a tree permit. That's why it was all done earlier, because they were doing other work, and we were trying to make sure they were compliant even with the other work. It wasn't intended to kind of separate it out from this project. But yes, that, it's, should be a full-blown arborist report.
Okay. Well, when this came to us the first time, there wasn't a report, and I had to ask for one. The report came, but now, in this package, we still never had the full report included. There's just a discussion sheet without the typical information that arborist report, and I'm just...
Right. You're, you were right. It's an addendum to the tree report that was submitted prior that you were referring to.
Does the, does the full report offer anything more than the, than the, I think the, I'm sorry. I think the addendum is the only one that speaks to the 48-inch oak. But you might ask the applicant that, and if they need to comply and add something new, we can make that a condition, something in addition, we can make that a condition of their, their project, that they provide something more. But I was under the impression that that addendum answered the, the issues about what the construction was doing in regards to the 48-inch oak.
So you felt that this addendum sufficed as an adequate tree report for this project?
Well, I didn't, that was my understanding. I didn't work on this project specifically myself, but you can, I mean, I'm, do you read it right, correct?
Right. I did, I did feel that the addendum was enough to provide for the 48-inch oak.
Okay. Thanks. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Could we hear from the applicant?
Good evening, planning commission and chairman. Yeah, since our last meeting, we were very fortunate to have a non-vote rather than a no vote. And I appreciate the fact that staff worked with me and, and came up with what we feel is a design that does meet all the findings for a variance. The tree report was initially tied to that, but I think it fully addresses exactly what an arborist would say if we went back to him. I don't think any of those conditions would change at all. You'd just be separating a report. And we'd like to move forward with the project and not, not be delayed any further on it. But, you know, this is a project, and we're really happy that we're able to come to these findings, because we feel it's a good project for the neighborhood. It's a good project for the owners. The neighbors are here in support of this, and they were in the previous meetings as well. So we support the project as, as conditioned and, and found it.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Thank you.
I do have a question.
Sorry? We do have a question.
Yeah, sorry.
Hi, my name's Amber Bizzaller. I'm three, from 306 McKee Street. I do have a question. May I have the paper? And I have a question about one of the conditions. It's number two. It says, within one year of design review permit approval, the permit shall be exercised in compliance with Article 32 of this chapter, or the permit shall be deemed void unless such approval is extended by the commission for good cause, either before or after the expiration of such time limit. It was my understanding that a variance runs with the land, and that permits are time-sensitive and time-bound. So I was quite shocked when I saw this, because it's, you know, it's really time-bound in the project.
We're talking about two separate things there. I think you're right. The variance would be permanent variance, right?
Right. The design review permit will be null and void.
Okay. That's what we're doing.
Can you clarify that for me? I'm sorry, I'm novice, but I just don't understand what that means.
So what exercise means, it says you, you shall be exercised, which you're considered exercised once you pull a building permit. You don't have to complete everything, but you have to pull a building permit. So if you don't do that within a year with the design review permit, which is the permit that you're getting to build the house and do the work, the variance only addresses the encroachment, which is the three and a half foot encroachment, that will stay forever with the land. So you need to exercise, he, he needs to come in and submit for a building permit, and you need to pull a building permit. If you don't do that within a year, you need to come back and ask for an extension, which usually is almost always granted, because you'll come back and you'll tell us why you weren't able to do that. Usually it's funding or design constraints, things of that nature. And so then usually staff supports that, and it goes forward and to the commission. But, so that's what, that's what it means. Exercise means that you pull a building permit, doesn't mean that you complete everything.
So just so clear, I think the variance is in perpetuity, so it runs with the land regardless, but that the design approval is null and void if we don't score it within a year.
I believe that, Joe, you might want to look this up, but I believe the variance also has to be exercised, does it not? You have to, you have to initiate both of them. You can't, you don't get a variance and then get the discretion to just sit on it. You actually have to exercise it. But once it's been exercised, it does run with the land. Inaugurated, whatever word, they use exercise here, inaugurated, whatever word helps you understand the process better.
It doesn't have to be different from what Chair said.
He can look it up. I don't have the code in front of me, but...
I'm sorry to delay this.
No, no, no. It's important that you understand.
So if I'm understanding you correctly, Kathleen, so if we approve this tonight, you would then have a year from, it's, it's not from the date we approve it, is it? It's 30 days after that?
No, I think it's from the date, the date you approve it. It's a year.
Okay. So you'd have a year to get the plans finished, pull a building permit.
To inaugurate the variance.
Or request an extension. We've actually had people extend things for many years, so...
Okay, so with a variance, the code reads that within 180 days of the variance approval, the variance shall be exercised in compliance with Article 32 of this chapter, or the variance shall be deemed void. So you have 180 days to inaugurate or exercise your right with a variance, and once you do that, then it runs with the land.
We can, the decision that makes them extend. There's no provision to extend this. No.
We're running out.
Is there? Point one versus point two.
Oh, that's where it says, within six months of variance approval.
And what does that mean, exercised? So a permit has been pulled, for a building? Okay.
So then there's a time extension provision in here that says the commission may, upon an application being filed before the expiration for good cause, grant a one-time, one-time extension not to exceed 180 days in compliance with Article 32. So you could, if you didn't think you were able to exercise this within 180 days and you showed good cause, you could apply for an, for an extension and bring it back. And I'm sure that, it's, I've seen, since I've been here, I've seen a lot of projects extended for a long period of time if you show good cause. So I don't think there's an issue, but I can't guarantee it.
One time.
One time. So that's a year when you add them together. Well, not quite, right? It's 360 days.
But then the permit has to be pulled, which means the designs have to be finalized. Thank you.
Any, do we have any questions for the applicant, anything like that?
I have another question for staff.
For staff? Okay.
Oh, I have a question. Oh, sorry.
I just want to, I'm sorry. We're over here talking, and I apologize. But I just wanted, if I can, just add something to that. So call the applicant back up, please, if you don't mind. I'm sorry. Yeah, both of you, it's fine. So, so as with, as with everything else, you know, you can, Joe and I were just talking, you know, we could work with you, and maybe you could just pull a grading permit or some portion of the project, you know, if those timeframes are difficult for you. We work with people like this all the time, so...
It's just tell us that the process is going to be, it's taken a lot of time and money, and...
So like I said, you know, if you get close to this year, then you'll work with us, and you know, we can, you know, you can do a foundation only, or grading permit, or something like that. Okay? So...
Then we can also, as we pull a building permit, we can ask for extension.
Yes, you may.
Building permit as well. So there's a process after this.
Yes, you may.
Extension.
Yes, you may. And you, you know the drill on that. It's up to you to keep track of your 180 days and then request an inspection. So he's, he sounds like he's well-schooled in how to do this. And so I think you should have plenty of time between all those options. But remember, we don't keep track of that for you. You have to keep track of it kind of yourself, but we, you know, we will, if we can, remind you if it gets close.
But I have to say that, that's...
You're going to be very unhappy, because you'd have to come back.
You have to go through the whole process.
So we don't want it to lapse. We don't. That's not, not our goal here.
Yeah. Thank, thank you for asking. I think most people just sort of bumble through it, but thanks for asking.
I have a question for staff. And this is under the conditions, conditions of approval for community development department number 11. The project arborist shall be located on site during construction, excavation activity to direct and observe excavation activities if any large roots a minimum of XX in size. What, what is our magic number there?
That was actually mitigation from the arborist report.
Okay. Did they have a number? I was just checking on the, I get concerned about buildings under oaks and the construction, and you're going to need a grade beam, and if you're cutting roots. I typically say, don't cut over an inch or two.
Well, I think that, I'm looking at the report, and I don't see any specific, but I guess maybe then we need to, just to...
Have a condition that that number would be supplied by the arborist, or?
Yeah. Or if you have a recommendation, that's fine. But I think we're trying to just make sure that the oaks are protected, because this garage is going to...
Right. That's my concern, and that's why I wanted to know what the number was. So, okay.
I also have just a clarification question on number 12. I think, I don't know if it's a typo or not, but it says, "All holes shall be hand-dug and completed within the footing area." I don't know if that should read, "All exploratory holes shall be hand-dug." I don't know, I don't know if I'm just splitting hairs or...
No, I don't, I think it could be clarified. I think you, you need to say, in, in compliance with the Pacific Horticultural Arborist Report, prior to any, prior to any construction excavations explored, what's that, exploratory hand-dug holes should be completed within the footing area to determine the depth. I mean, it should really read as that first sentence on the last paragraph?
Yeah.
I think that's, I think that's a good modification, because it's always better to be clearer than vague.
So this condition 12 should really read like that, that last paragraph of the arborist report. That's what we're saying.
So Commissioner Nolan, are you, did we conclude the arborist report issue, or where did we leave that?
I mean, truthfully, I would like to see a little more detail. We don't even have a map showing the tree and the drip line and the building, other than we do have the landscape, or the, I guess you would call it the landscape plan, or the building plan there, proposed site plan. But it doesn't have any numbers, dimensions pulled, or anything on it. Heather, looks like you have a comment.
I was just going to suggest maybe adding the condition that a, the arborist report shall identify, identify the oak tree in relation to the proposed garage, and then we can rewrite those conditions regarding the hand-dug holes.
Yeah, I think maybe there's a series of them that'll have to do with the arborist report, and I think maybe we need a catch-all one that says, "Prior to the issuance of any building permit, a revised arborist report shall be submitted that shows the tree, everything that you just said. A map that shows the trees, and that lays out the, the, who's, who the arborist is going to be on site, you know, you know, delineates the arborist, and then anything else that you want. And then follows, and then follows the recommendations in Pacific Horticulture Report dated June 4th, 2014, as far as mitigations. And then after the fact, there should be a report submitted, a monitoring report submitted of what the arborist did during the time he was out there. Yes. So I think, you know, you can handle that, but that's what I would suggest.
I guess, and this was kind of back to my original question, does the city have, do you have like a checklist or some criteria that you normally use when a condition like this comes forward? In other words, a project comes forward, or the building's going to be under an oak, and after the work's been done, this form that you're talking about that would be submitted back to the city as to what was done? Do we, is that something we have the language to, or?
No.
No.
Because we only really have language. No, because we only really have language in our tree permit. And our tree permit really is for pruning over four inches or documenting why a tree needs to be removed. Our tree permit process, our whole tree ordinance is kind of silent to maintaining health of a tree. So that's one of the things that I think that we've all been talking about that needs a little bit more refinement because it's, if we're going to preserve the oaks, then we need to make sure that the activities that are underneath them don't damage them. So we usually take the arborist's recommendation and just incorporate them verbatim because that's what they do. They're professionals in that area.
Thank you. I see we've lost our public here, but this is a public hearing. Yes. So people are invited to come and speak, but maybe our video guy, would you like to speak?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Well, discussion, motion?
I'm in agreement with all that's been said.
Yeah. Appreciate the. I appreciate you guys coming up with this revised plan because I think it makes it a lot easier on our end to, to grant a variance.
Really. Yeah. I, I really commend the cooperative spirit that I've sensed here. It's been a full, you know, a good conclusion, I think, to what was really tricky and complicated situation and reflects well on staff's willingness to really look at this and, and for the applicant to work alongside. So, good job.
Other discussion? Anybody want to make a motion? Mac, you were excited about this last time, so you could.
Sure. I'd like to make a motion that we approve design, or, sorry. Planning Commission Resolution number fourteen, is this eleven? Twelve. Approval of the variance fourteen oh one and the design review permit fourteen ten to the encroachment and the side setback for construction of a new garage located at three oh six McKee Street Assessor's Parcel Number twenty-one. The only modification I'd like to make would be on, like, number twelve to reflect the last paragraph of Attachment B, which is, should I read the revised language? No? Okay. Exploratory hand held, hand dug holes should be completed within the footing area to determine the depth and the extent of any root encroachments that might impact the health or structure of the tree. This should be completed under the direction and observation of the project arborist, who will make recommendations or mitigations based on findings. And then the orange plastic is included. And where did we leave number twelve for the root size, the XX? Do we conclude that?
On number eleven?
Yes, sorry. Or do you want to make a?
Well, I guess that would be for the onsite arborist.
Yeah, it would be nice if we had that number right now. I mean, it's hard to say, but.
So I think we, I think what we agreed on was prior to the issuance of a building permit.
Right, there'd be an updated.
Would revise, revise the.
Arborist report.
Arborist report to include the dimension of the roots.
Right.
A site plan showing the tree.
Dimension and the dimensions.
And that included, also included would be the requirement that a final mitigation report regarding all the impacts of the tree be submitted prior to certificate of occupancy.
Did you get that wording?
Just as Kathleen said.
Just as Kathleen said.
And it was that Kathleen, not this.
Accept the categorical sequo.
Accept the categoricals.
Exemption.
Exemption, just as Sherri said.
All right. Do we have a second for this motion?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Ellen. Any further discussion or shall we just vote on it? All right. Could we have a roll call, please, Sherri?
Lajowski.
Aye.
Isabella.
Yes.
Costa.
Yes.
Merk.
Yes.
Nolan.
Yes.
All right. So you guys are on your way. And thank the sayers for us, too. It was nice of them to come, even though they didn't get to speak. Yeah. Thank you. And that brings us back together again.
Chair Merk.
Yes, ma'am.
Could we turn the air conditioning down?
We have to apply to Sherri for that. Oh, it's freezing. Wow. How much did that cost us to get the thermostat adjusted? Okay. We are moving on to zone text amendment, update the second dwelling compliance program guidelines. And could we hear from staff on this?
Okay, this is a continued item from last meeting. And it was a decision of both, well, I'd say the direction from the planning commission based on some input from one member of the building appeals board to separate the building issues and the planning issues. And staff has before you tonight, the, a draft dated October first, where we've done that and we'd like to go over that with you. And so I'm not going to spend much time on the staff report, other than to say that in tonight's meeting, you do have all the different former drafts in different colors, so you can say, kind of see the progression. And we apologize for having those in black and white for you last, last evening or last meeting. So with that, I'd like to just go through this, this program a little bit. One of the things I noticed when I tried, when I started to kind of divide it up was that the original eligible applicant and eligible dwellings. So the first, the compliance program as it's adopted right now references both second residential units or guest house, but then goes on to say further that it has to have provisions of living, sleeping, eating and cooking. That's in direct conflict to a guest house. So there was internal conflicts within the first two paragraphs. So what I did was, I said, so I'm going to read this to you. So eligible applicant, an applicant must be the owner of the qualifying property in which eligible dwelling or eligible dwellings are located. I should go through and I should take out the plural because of course you can only have one on a property. So right away, there's a conflict there, but I missed that. So an eligible dwelling shall meet the following. It shall be accessory to a primary dwelling on the same parcel. It shall provide complete independent living facilities for one or more persons, including permanent provisions for living, sleeping, eating, cooking, sanitation and parking. And if attached, the primary dwelling is without interior access to the primary dwelling. Shall have been constructed before January first, two thousand and six. Does not have a street address lawfully issued by the city and no record of the unit appears in either the city building permit or county assessor's files. Those last two, I don't really know why they're in there. I don't really think that's pertinent to zoning, but if you feel it is, and I guess maybe there's some history that you may be able to impart with me why those are in there, but I don't know if the intent is that it has a street address that makes it lawful. I don't know. I don't know. Again, that's one of those things I can't really answer. I don't know why those two things are in there. Qualifying property consists of parcels of land that are located in an A, VMU, O or R district. And property standards, qualifying property may comply with the terms and conditions of the program rather than the requirements for the second residential units as described in the Ojai Municipal Code. At a minimum, the qualifying property must comply with modified zoning regulations and property standards adopted for the proper program. The property owner must adhere to the occupancy requirements specific to the qualifying property. The unit must qualify as an eligible dwelling as described above. And the application process must be completed in a timely and proper manner and a compliance permit must be issued. So we've changed this to say that compliance permit will be processed as follows. An application shall be submitted to the city for review and action. The first step in obtaining a compliance permit will be to obtain zoning conformance. The planning division shall review the proposal for compliance with the modified zoning regulations listed below. If the project meets those requirements, a zoning conformance shall be issued and the applicant shall be forwarded to the building division for review of the property standards. No additional conditions shall be placed upon the applicant beyond those requirements listed below without a discretionary hearing. So what are the modified zoning requirements? At a minimum, qualified property in an eligible dwelling shall conform with the requirements set forth in section ten point two, one, seven, zero, nine of the Ojai Municipal Code with the following exceptions. And I'd just like to make the comment that we've heard a lot of dialogue from the public about having things in different spots and being confusing, saying you have to, you're, you're sending them, this is a handout, giving these to people. And the first thing we're doing is we're sending them over to section ten point two, one, seven, zero, nine, except, and then saying, oh, but here's an exception to that. It might be prudent to make this all inclusive, you know, instead of having the person go two different places. I didn't do that for you tonight, but I did want, want to bring it up because again, this is a lot of the criticism we hear is that people, you know, I got to go here, I got to go there. So anyway, that's a thought. And then, so we move on with the lease.
Kathleen, what does that section tendish to?
That's the second unit section.
It's just, okay.
So we could go over that second unit.
Is there a way to say that, to like summarize that?
Well, I think we just need to go, I think the next time, I mean, obviously I'm trying to get momentum going on this and keep on getting input from you folks and then bring it back and refining it. I think if that's what you want to do, make it all inclusive, then we can just take those things that you want to apply to this and just put them all in this handout, rather than saying, look here and look there, you know? But I left that the way it was because I was, I was instructed just to divide this. But as I'm going through it, I'm, I did take out the guest unit. The other comment I have is when I read about permanent provisions for living, sleeping, eating, cooking and sanitation, the word permanent is, is a, is a word I would ask you to take a look at because some, what that, that's kind of an old term that refers to hardwiring in either two twenty or a gas line. And many people now have, where you talk about cooking, the sanitation district, and I know we're not using them as any kind of benchmark, but they use heating. So, you know, it has a kitchen if you can food prep. It means, there's a lot of different buzzwords used to delineate a kitchen. And so the idea of permanent, meaning that a person couldn't have a duplex receptacle and plug a microwave in because that's not permanent because you can take it and move it. And I think this compliance document is trying to be a little bit more lenient than that. It's trying to say, you know, you may have, you may have cooking or, or food prep area if you have a refrigerator in a sink and you got a microwave, you know? So you think about that, whether you want it to be a hardwired two twenty gas line type cooking facility or you want it to take out the word permanent and just say cooking provisions. I mean, again, all these words are kind of something you need to consider. So we go back through and the modified zoning regulations would be the lease term, the zoning district, exterior design, which, you know, exempts them out of the architectural standards. I made a change to the lot size. The minimum lot size in which the compliant unit is located shall be a minimum of five thousand square feet in the VMU and shall be a minimum of seventy-five hundred square feet in the A, O and R. So you can change those any way you want. That was just the first benchmark to give you something to work from because before it was open ended that it need not be ten thousand, but it didn't send, said any, it didn't say, set any bottom gutter for it. And so, you know, obviously, we're telling everybody that they have to meet the lot coverage. So I believe in here, it says, at no time shall the compliance use and cause the lot coverage of the subject parcel to exceed the minimum lot coverage allowed in the district. So obviously, really small lots that already have a house on them, you know, are going to be pretty close to the lot coverage. It's going, you know, I mean, there's a push-pull to that, you know, how much you're really going to cover. But I, I would ask that you dialogue about what the minimum lot size you want for a second unit.
Can I ask a question about those numbers that you used? What are they based on or where did you get the numbers? So that we can, if we wanted to keep those, we'd know why or use, we could reference something.
It's, so what, how did, how is it, okay, the minimum, the minimum, what it said before was the minimum lot area on which the compliance unit is located may be less than eighty-five hundred in the VMU and less than nine thousand or ten thousand nine hundred in the A, O and R. So I kind of said eighty-five hundred, well, it can be less than, so trying to be lenient and encourage these. So I went down to five, thinking that that was a good drop. It was just kind of an arbitrary thing, you know, dropping like, you know, between thirty-five hundred to twenty-five hundred square feet, still keeping in the back of my mind that the lot coverage is going to dominate. Because you can't go with a lot coverage. And then with the ten thousand nine hundred, I just dropped it down to seventy-five hundred. You know, I, I mean, you have to pick a number. I, I've seen these numbers used in other ordinances. And, you know, again, I think anything less than five and having two units on it is getting pretty dense. It's getting pretty dense for Ojai.
So that'd be your minimum.
But I want to, I want to make it lenient enough that the lot coverage controls, right? Because ultimately, the lot coverage is telling you how much open space you have to have on your lot. Okay. So then the floor area, the maximum size of the compliance unit may exceed six hundred and forty square feet up to a maximum of fifty percent of the floor area of the principal residence. Again, that's keeping proportionate. Fifty, fifty percent is, you know, keeping the primary unit primary and ancillary unit ancillary, but at no time shall the unit be larger than twelve hundred square feet. But there was a version of this that had the fifty percent of the floor areas with a strike through it. So however you, I mean, I don't want to put too many constraints on it. I think it's really important that we know that there is some proportion, but I'm, but I'm open to whatever. And then I really didn't have any suggestion, other than the twelve hundred square feet I put in there. That was my throw-in because that's kind of the state.
Right, number.
And at that point, you're really a functioning three-bedroom, two-bath with all the traffic and impacts through parks, police, fire and all that, that a regular unit would have. So that was kind of the thought there.
I just got a question for you. I just would like your opinion. So there's a property and there is a seven hundred square foot home on it. And it exceeds five thousand square feet. So is it possible to go ahead and build a second unit on that? I would think it'd be possible to go ahead and build a second unit and allocate that set, the new unit as the main residence and allocate the original residence as the, it falls within the fifty percent guidelines as described here.
And you could.
There's nothing to say that you couldn't do that.
That's very common in towns where they're very small, under twelve hundred square foot houses, yes. We don't. I'm sorry.
That's what we're talking about, new building and this is the second.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I jumped the gun. I know, this is legalizing second.
You're just thinking, but that's fine. I, I agree, I agree with you. There's, there's nothing that you couldn't do that. That's correct. So, go ahead.
I got one, one quick question. I, I see on, I don't want to get ahead of you, but I also don't want to get behind you. As far as, because on page one, it's the eligible dwelling, the eligible dwellings. It says, shall have been constructed before January first, two thousand and six. And I'm, but then I see on, on the, on the blue line, the Attachment B. I'm seeing March eleventh, two thousand and fourteen.
Right.
What's, what's that?
And there's all kinds of thoughts on that. That was one of the things that the building appeals board came up with. And, and yes, that can certainly be, that timeframe is all subject to however you want it to be, whether you want it to be. So it, the threshold of when the, the unit can be constructed is to encourage people to not go out there and be doing illegal units. So it's whatever you guys want. This is really a compliance program. And he's right. I mean, you know, that timeframe, I picked the original document and I just separated it out. The building appeals board is very, they're, they work on those dates a lot and they want to make sure that they're, that they're opening this program out to the majority of people, that they can. So I think there was thought to move it forward from two thousand and six. What date you want to suggest would be whatever you thought was appropriate.
Do we know why they picked that March date? Is that reflective of something?
Their meeting.
Yeah, I know. I was wondering, yeah.
I think that's probably the, the meeting date. I think the, the idea is, well, I don't really know. I just make it open and available to those to encourage the majority of people that have illegal units to try to make them compliant.
I kind of liked the two thousand and six date, actually, because that's when we started talking about this whole compliance program. And anybody that built anything after that date should have gotten a permit for it.
And that's fine. You know, those are things that, that you, that you should discuss.
Well, that's assuming that they knew that that was happening.
Well, you know, it's-
Well, I'm just saying, this compliance program, I don't see it going very far. I don't see that many people complying with it, only mainly, mostly because of the big giant sanitation fee that's associated with it. So I, I would tend to, I'd give it any chance of success, I would give it as leniency as possible. So I'd be more on the opposite side of that. I'd go to the current date just to see if we can get some people to comply. And plus, there's another side of that, there was that building boom that went into like 2008, 2009, where people were doing a lot of remodeling and getting all those, all those funny loans. And there could be some projects out there that could fall into that category.
Kathleen, go on.
Sure, yeah, thank you.
Okay, so then-
I'm sorry, Kathleen, just, in that one sense we were just looking at about the floor area, I don't know that we need to say it may exceed 640 square feet because we're saying it can be up to 50% of the size of the residence and less than 1,200 square feet. So the 640 is kind of irrelevant at this point.
I think it's for, that's, I took that, it was very much repeated over and over again. I took a bunch of them out. I think it was very, I was meant to be informative to people to say, hey, I'm over 640. Right now, the limit's 640. And so it's, again, just kinda encouraging people, you know, you could be over 640 and still comply with this program. But I see what you're saying.
It's kind of an informational thing.
Mm-hmm.
It's also a minimum, right? Anything less than 640?
You know, I looked that up and I was-
Problematic in terms of actual livability?
Well, yeah, because you have to have all those, you have to have those things in it, a living area, bathroom, a kitchen area, right? So, the compliance unit may encroach into the required rear and inside yard setbacks, but no closer than five feet. Within the VMU zone, setbacks may be further reduced, subject to construction of properly rated fire separation walls. And then I added this part, I think is what I added, but at no time shall it be closer than three feet to the property line. Maybe I didn't, I'm trying to remember at this point. But I think that that's, um, something for consideration. Compliance units shall meet the building separation requirement of five feet between a primary building and an accessory unit and subject, and the subject compliance unit. Because again, we can't have accessory buildings too close to each other. I mean, there's building separation and separation from the property line. But I would ask you to consider that whether or not setbacks are allowed, like we saw the gentleman or the property tonight that had the bathroom, you know, cantilevered. There are certain provisions that allow encroachments into setbacks. You know, like for instance, chimneys are allowed to go in because they already have a certain width. And in a lot of cities, those chimneys have gotten wider because they also included bump outs for entertainment centers, I mean, when you have the more modern track-type home. So I would ask that you consider when something can get into the setback and what the goal is by not having, by having a setback. So, one of the things we need to realize is that detached accessory garages may be allowed closer than a unit. And so by allowing somebody to have a detached garage that then subsequently gets changed into a unit, then automatically makes that difficult because you're not gonna pick up your building and move. So, um, ask if there's any situations or consider any situations where there might be a setback you might wanna go into, like for instance, if they don't have openings, you know, if they don't have windows, you know, is it, is, I don't want you close to me because you're loud, and then, you know, if it's no openings, if no appliances in that setback, like, you know, now that it becomes a unit, I don't want your air conditioner because I don't wanna listen to it all night. Is there any parameters that you would, instead of saying, no closer than five feet, consider, you know, hey, if you're a 100-foot property and you've got a 20-foot-deep garage and that's only one-fifth of the whole length of your property, would that encroachment ever make sense with no walls and no air conditioner? And so, look into the, because this is the things that we're looking at is the zoning. And again, we're trying to entitle or make compliance most of these units. And, um, so if there is any parameters or any conditions that would be-
I think-
Go ahead.
I think one of the parameters is, depending on what's, what's on the other side, what's adjacent to the property line. For instance, if there's a driveway there versus a, another house structure, that would be an exception to that encroachment.
So I think that's something you should consider. And rather than, I mean, again, you know, whether going closer would mean that, as it said up originally, um, you know, you're, you're doing a very ministerial zoning compliance program and maybe that's this, and then you provide something that allows something different. I don't know, but it's, it's something for consideration because that's what we're looking at. We're looking at the zoning issues. And then finally, it's the parking, and the compliance unit may satisfy, satisfy its parking requirement through common use of parking provided for the primary residence or use on-street parking. And I added, the parking space provided shall function independently and shall not be in tandem with the parking space for the main unit. And that's pretty common, that you don't wanna have to go to your landlord and say, can you move your car? I mean, it needs to be independent. And, you know, so that's all I added.
Kathleen, I just, I was gonna bring up the building separation requirement of five feet between a primary building and accessory building. I know we're talking about zoning here, but code, there's, there's certain fire restrictions too. And if you make a, is it presumed that everything, if this is, if this non-compliant dwelling is brought into compliance, that the building and safety code requirements will also have to follow suit?
Right, that's right.
Because that would not work in the most instances as applied here.
Right, so you could either remove it altogether or you could, you-
Upgrade it, upgrade the fire rating of the walls, the sort of thing.
Yeah, that's what I do.
Yeah, so, but that's, so what we're trying to do is make sure that it's a two-pronged test. So they're gonna get their zoning conformance, it says they met all their zoning stuff, and then building's gonna go over and say, oh, you're fine with that separation provided you provide a one-hour firewall.
They'll follow up on the-
Right, and then that, the reason for doing that is that this will be appealable to you, the commissioners, the planning commission, and the property standards, and the building will be appealable to the Building Appeals Board. And we wanna make it very clear, again, we're just trying to help the people through the process. So with that, it just goes on to say, once a project has been, has received its zoning conformance approval, the project is forwarded to the Building Division for review. The Building Division shall review the project for the following, and it's all in here as far as that stuff. And I didn't change anything. It's as it was originally because those things are something we're gonna have to hammer out with the Building Appeals Board. And I didn't want us to get bogged down in the weeds on that, so they're gonna take those things. There's a lot of questions about what they can create, or checklist they can create and how they can make it not so onerous, and that's something that's gonna be a long involved process for them. And you'll probably hear part of that when we have a joint meeting. I think we'll have a joint meeting coming up, I believe. And so then, the applications, the formal applications, they need to be filed with us. And we kind of, I don't think there's anything new with that, except that date is in here again. There's some redundancy in this document, but I think it's intended to really make it very clear for whoever's applying. So then it goes on to say, you can have a preliminary consultation, and at the option of the eligible applicant, preliminary consultations can be conducted with the city without having to identify the ownership, occupancy, or location. The purpose of the preliminary consultation is to clarify the application of property standards to specific circumstances, thus allowing the eligible applicant to determine the estimated cost and feasibility of making formal application for a compliance permit. So, the preliminary consultation may be conducted at the request of the eligible applicant or through a third-party intermediary such as the city's second unit compliance program ombudsman. So, once an application is deemed complete for processing, the applicant will be routed to the Planning Division for review for modified zoning regulations. And if the project meets the modified zoning standards, zoning confirmation approval, I think that's supposed to be conformance, will be issued and the project will be forwarded to the Building Division for review for property standards. All zoning confirmation, and it's supposed to be compliance, so I apologize, I'll clean that up. Maybe, must be spell check. I'm gonna blame it on spell check, give me a, actions made by the community development director shall be appealable to the planning commission. So it's very clear what, you know, if they have an issue with anything that we're doing. Once a zoning conformance approval has been issued, an inspection of the qualifying property will be made by the city to ascertain compliance with the property standards. The results of this inspection will be communicated to the eligible applicant in writing, including all necessary work required to bring the project into, into compliance with the required property standards. If subsequent inspections determine that additional corrective work is necessary to bring the unit into compliance with the property standards, supplemental permits may also be required by operation of the Ojai Municipal Code. A compliance permit will be issued based upon zoning, approval, verification by the city that all project, that the project is, I'm sorry, is compliant with all property standards and that any necessary corrective work has been completed and that all conditions of eligibility have been properly satisfied. So then it talks about how we, you know, you need to get your application in before the termination date, and limitations, permit fees, a disclaimer, confidentiality, most of that was already in the program. And then the financial assistance, the ombudsman's support, and penalty assessments, which says, you know, once this is done, then you're, you know, subject to fees and penalties and things of that nature. So with that, I'm open, I hope that kinda goes over how we're trying to separate this and make it very clear how you go through the process and who you appeal to. And so I just asked that you give me some direction about the zoning issues and make discussion about how you'd like those modified. And then I will make sure this comes back again at the next meeting with even yet a more refined document for you.
Thank you. Thanks for all the work you put in. I really like the idea of splitting up the zoning and the building part and making it really clear to the applicants, you know?
I like it too because I think we've heard, we've heard from people before that they get confused and where they're going, and, yeah, I think it's good.
Yeah.
So I guess the first thing that we went over was the eligible dwelling. And the word that you had commented on was, do we need to leave the word "permanent" in, including permanent provisions? And that had to do with, so the utilities, if it was hardwired or not?
Well, I think that's the general-
A lot of it's covered in that building section as well.
Yeah. And I think, I just think it's one of those words that could be in future, you know, could be, unless you define it-
Right.
It could be interpreted in different ways by different people, and we're trying to make this very clear for people. And so I think maybe it's just one of those sort of, um-
No, I mean, you could do without the word "permanent."
Maybe we could do it, strike it.
Yeah.
Which item, which item are you talking about?
That's on page one of seven, under eligibility criteria. And it says, first it has eligible applicant, then it goes eligible dwelling. And then about the third sentence down right in the middle, it says, "Including permanent provisions for living, sleeping." And then, so the question was, do we leave it or strike it? We're kind of agreeing to maybe strike it. We're all kind of nodding, it looks like.
Yes.
Okay, I'm gonna strike it online.
Yeah, the rest of it looks really good.
Okay, and so then that rest in that paragraph, we wanna talk about the date.
Oh, yeah.
Right, and then that would be that January, or do we go, or do the March date, or do we come up with our own date?
We had, we discussed this with the Building Appeals Committee about making that date, whatever date this thing is actually adopted.
That's a good point, yeah, yeah.
Because up to that point, it doesn't really have any-
So how about I just leave it blank the next time I come through and we'll fill that in when the two bodies get together and that's something that both of you can, okay?
A date uncertain.
How does that relate to the termination date? It was mentioned something about the city council would make that decision, or, did I read that?
The termination day of the program is determined by council. Has there been discussion on terminate, how long this program would-
Wasn't it two, weren't they looking at two years rather than one?
Two years.
Probably until we have to do the next housing element.
Oh.
The expiration already came up, it was June. And then, but they said it would automatically extend, extend another two years.
So I think everybody knows we've had, I think it's five properties that have gone through this program, or is it six now? Five. So, you know, it's, I think the idea of having a sunset date is to make people compliant, but yet we're not getting enough in getting the compliance permits. So I think it's been extended because we're trying to figure out why we're not getting more compliant units.
We have quite a few in that don't meet the criteria.
Right.
I think a very important part of that, getting compliance is that sanitation fee. Now, I was looking at that section at the end where you just kinda mentioned it in the permit fees. Is there, the last project we did, we were able to get financing from the sanitation district for the client. They offered a financing package. I think that's extremely important to be aware of because, you know, if these people are wanting to comply, coming up with $20,000 is gonna be a turnoff right there, but getting that-
Just so you know that, all the compliance people that we've had, a dozen apply, they've all already paid. We only mailed letters to the, the units that had already paid the sanitary district.
Okay.
The sanitary district provided us with a list of all those units that had paid. And, but they're not legal through us, but they're legal through sanitary.
I see.
So they'd already paid that.
Sherry, I got a question. What, when you said that they don't meet the criteria, what criteria are they not meeting?
We have a number of garage conversions and we just have to say no. And we have a couple of them that are at three-foot setback in the VMU. And it says five in the current compliance program, so we couldn't legalize those.
I should've mentioned that I did take out, before there was a uniform, again, there was, you know, unpermitted garage conversions, that was it. Unpermitted garage conversion are expressly prohibited. And again, you know, I took that out, it's not in here, and it says, "Unpermitted garage conversions will be accepted on a case-by-case basis." Again, you know, if it meets the zoning criteria, then what does it matter if it's, if it's,
If it's a converted garage or not.
Right.
Because once they see that contingency, nobody's gonna come forth and have you tell them to take down their dwelling. So if they're gonna come in and say that your garage conversion is, you have a discretion to say no, that, that's gonna eliminate just about everybody who has a garage-
Well, I think you need to talk about garage conversions, and that would be, if you've done a garage conversion and you have not provided any other parking anywhere else, then you need to, we need to talk about adding, adding another sentence in there saying, you know, you know, converted garages, and you needed to have a dialogue about when you, when you can do it. The code allows you to convert your garage, provided that you provide covered parking somewhere else, okay? And, you know, so, the way this is worded, you have to comply with the zoning standards, which is everything in that code plus these modifications. So that's why I'm saying, it really needs, I need to integrate everything into one document so you're looking, you're not looking at two documents. And then you really need to talk about, under what criteria you'd allow a converted garage. And like I said, you know, like Sherry's saying, setbacks, but you have to remember, we're not changing the setback all the way up and down the property. We're, we're setting, we're, we're changing it for, at its, you know, if you think about it, 640 square feet is like a two, a three-car garage, right? It's a little bit, again, another garage, another car parking space. Or, and, and so maybe it might be as 24 or something, 24 by 24 or something like that. You know, do you want that, that to come in three feet, you know? And if it would, no, or yes, if it didn't have openings? And those are the kind of things. And if we actually develop a code that starts to say, yes, but if you wanna have a converted garage, you can't have any openings, your neighbor can't hear you, I don't want you opening a window, or, instead of just saying, no, no, no. I mean, if that's what the commission wants, is absolutely none, that's fine. But there may be, there may be certain conditions where it's okay.
I thought the idea was that we were gonna have a process where we could, the planning commission could review garage conversions.
That's fine, if that's how you want it, because that's how it said, it said-
That's what it says there.
Unpermitted garages will be accepted. So I, you know, we need to work on that and divide, to develop those appendix A guidelines, if that's how you want it to be, that, that's fine too.
Yeah, because it'd be like a CUP for the-
And what, so if we do that under separate CUP guidelines or findings, then I need to also have you think about what those findings would be, like, under what conditions. We, we still need to have thresholds or some kind of findings so a person knows, am I, you see, the public has to have a certain level of, discretion is a double-edged sword. The public wants some certainty and you want flexibility. And so we have to find that threshold where they feel comfortable enough, they come forward, because now you're talking about a public hearing, so they can't go hide, once it's been vetted out to everybody.
That's my concern. Because now we're talking about a compliance program, we gotta remember that. And so if we're now gonna- And so if we're now gonna ask them to come in front of us and we're gonna have that discretion, who's gonna do that?
So I would ask for garage conversions that it shouldn't be, I don't think that garage conversions in and of themselves should all be elevated to the planning commission, there should be, if you met things, this is the modified, you should be able to go through like anybody else, you shouldn't be singled out. But if you can't, and there's some other tier that you would like to have it that way, based on a case-by-case basis, like he was saying, you know, a garage next to a driveway, or you've got a key lot, or maybe your lot's like, you know, so large you don't impact anybody, but it just happens to be that building was built so many years ago right on the property line, then, then that might be inappropriate to say you're an outlier and you need a CUP. But we still need to think about, we're trying to get people to come in and feel confident that they've exposed themselves and everybody knows they have an illegal unit now, and with some kind of comfort that they can get through the compliance program.
Well, I guess our, I mean, we could maybe set aside some criteria, but, I mean, I would want to make sure that they,
I think we can.
Took care of the parking.
Right.
For the cars they provided someplace.
Yeah.
And that it's not gonna impact the street parking in their area.
Well, I guess the idea would be, okay, so if we were talking about newly created second units, I would say, well, you know, gonna put somebody on the street that, because it says on-street parking and they're already impacted streets. But if these units have existed pre-2006, that's eight years now. I would say whatever impacts to the neighborhood by having an illegal unit, the neighborhood's probably already absorbed, you know? I mean, there is some thought to that. So, you know, it's, while I would probably caution you against making the program that way for legalized units, for legally, but we're trying to get these older ones permitted. And I would think that whatever, whether there's parking occurring in the front yard, or the side yard, or on the street, that's the way the neighborhood is.
An example, I think, like on Shady Lane where they have these single garages, right? And they're attached to the house. A ton of them are, have been converted one way or another to, not, maybe not necessarily second dwelling, but a room, but in a lot of instances, I'm sure, second dwellings. And the reality of it is that there's no side yard, I mean, there's like five-foot side yard setbacks. There's no way to add a second, a covered, two-car covered garage, unless you encroach in the front setback, or something of that nature. Maybe that's some language that we need to explore in terms of, you know, being able to bring those types of units into compliance.
I've seen it often that there's language that says something like, demonstrate that there isn't any place to put parking, you know, that it's not just by choice you don't want to provide the parking, but there is no, there, you don't have any place to put it. And then, you know, so it's language, something like it would, you would have to do significant demoing to, you know, structure or something to comply, then, then that gets you, then you make that finding. Somebody comes in and says, you know, I really don't have any place to put parking, I'd love to do it, but I don't have any place to put it. And so I'm gonna park in the front yard setback, within the front yard setback. Or you allow tandem, you know, I mean, and tandem has existed for many, many, many years. And within the same unit, within the same control, I mean, I've seen, I've done a lot of these where it's a two-car garage and it's a two-car driveway, and we allow one, one in, you know, we allow them to go like this, one in the garage and one in the driveway for the main unit, and the other one in the driveway for the ancillary unit. And the other part of the garage just becomes storage or whatever, you know? So that way, these people are in control of theirs and the unit is in control of theirs. And tandem parking exists lots and places and it's, and it works, I mean, you know, it works, people work that out. So, do you want me to keep on going? So, I think that, going back to the, what I'm asking you to do is, we need to, let's see, I think I've lost my thing here, but if there's any other zoning, or if you want to, I don't know about those other two on there, shall be construct, or does not have a street address, lawfully issued by the city. I would think that having a street address has something to do with it being lawfully created, so I think that's kind of not relevant, if you're, if you have a street address, is that why that's in there, Sherry, do you know? I would assume if you have a street address, somehow that, I don't know why that would kick you out of the program, I just don't know. And I think maybe it needs to, do you have any idea?
No, I'm just that- Actually, I think part of that has to do with the issue when we're going through the housing element adoption, convincing the state that these are really non-
Oh, I see what you're saying.
That was the big issue, remember? What we're trying to do is, is to create affordable housing units with existing buildings. And, and, and so this was the minimum, sorry, this is the minimum standard, so we could convince the state that, that these units really have never been counted as dwelling units. Now, we have an adopted plan, we have, we have the adopted updated housing element. Whether we now got more liberal, I probably want to have, maybe, maybe you want to talk to our housing consultants or talk to the, to someone to make sure that it doesn't unwind some approval we have from the state.
Yeah, that's what I see what you're saying. So if they had an address, it would have been counted already in-
Exactly, exactly. It went to our, it went to the underlying principle, I think that's also the 2006 number, I believe. This goes back to the issue about the, about the affordable housing creation. Now, we could, we could, you could choose to legalize units that may not get counted in our, in our arena process, or we get to count under our, under our unit create, unit generation numbers, but still be legalized. And you were writing the program beyond, or I think beyond what the council originally had contemplated, but that's your role, is to advise them on how to make this work best.
So sometimes you see on, on second units, a mailbox, there'll be a mailbox with A and B, you know, that, so.
Well, I don't think people will know whether their address was legally, lawfully assigned to them. I mean, I guess, Sheri, it's our records.
Right.
So what I'm trying to do is not have something in there that a person feels like they're, well, I don't know, that might be a deal breaker for me. Because, again, and then the other thing about, the unit doesn't appear in either the city building permit or county assessor files. Well, the, you know, the county assessor assesses you whether it's legal or not. They're gonna get every dime they can and if, and, I mean, I don't know about Ventura County, but all the counties I've been in before, if, if, if you're, if, if you have a garage and you convert it, they're assessing you as, as a living space. It's like the district, the district doesn't care if it's legal or not, they're gonna get their money. So I'm just concerned that these two things are arbitrarily keeping people out of the project, or out of the program. And so I will do as Mr. Fletcher said, you know, vet it through and see if there's any issue with removing them. And I don't know why, we wouldn't want units to get compliant, even if they're not being counted, because, you know, the idea is, it does benefit the public to have a compliance permit, helps, you know, all the way around with, with things becoming legal and, you know, the real estate market and the whole bit. So, I can do that, I will check that. So moving on, I guess, is there anything else with qualifying property or property standards or the process that you think is, I think the process though seems all, seem to be good, but then we would just talk about the moaning, modified zoning regulations? And I would like you to give me a direction to incorporate everything into one document, because I think it's difficult, like you-
Right, the all-inclusive, I would think we would want that.
Okay.
I mean, what does everyone else think about that?
We're talking about modifying the zoning regulation section?
Right, and saying, because what it says in here, it says that you have to conform to all the requirements, you know, to the requirement, with the following exceptions, but it doesn't tell you what all the requirements are. So again, we're a little bit of a black hole for the public and I'd just like to have all of it in one document. And then, are there any of these A through H that, that you have direction for me, regarding size, or?
I have a, yeah, first I have a question about the lease term and then the lot size.
Mm-hmm.
So what's the thinking, what, what's the intent behind the, the lease term limit?
Our regular second unit program does have a lease term.
What is it?
Three years or something like that.
So, yeah, is that a minimum or a maximum?
A minimum.
Yes, but, yeah.
Yeah.
Whoever.
That's a good gig for a property manager.
That's a good one.
Just wondering if we even need that in there, I mean, do we, do we care about the lease term?
If you don't, I don't, I, I think the only issue with leasing or not leasing, or any of those other issues is if you cared about it being a vacation rental. And other than that, I don't think anybody really cares, do they?
Well, that's what I, that's what I thought you meant, so there, so it's really more to err on the side of allowing a shorter-
Yeah, what's in the program, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, it's, the three years is a maximum term. Second unit shall not be up for sale.
Okay.
And maximum term of three years.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what, any lease shall not exceed three years.
Okay.
So maximum.
And the other thing is, that we never get is the annually submitted sworn statement.
But I don't think that, I don't think that we really care about that and I don't think that we, we have the staff time to check people's leases or have, go after them to turn it in. And it's just, I think it probably, so leaving it in there that there shall be no length of, is a good thing, just to leave in to make sure that everybody knows we're not looking at that.
Maybe we should just go down each one, rather than jumping ahead. Maybe that's the most efficient way to go through each of these, if anybody has any comments, so.
If you, if you like, what I could do is I could take these, A through H, put them in a matrix and give them to you. Here's way, here's, you know, like, because Sherry's saying, this is what the program says now. I mean, obviously, we could say, this is the way it's worded, this is the modification, this is the way it's worded, this is the modification, and just take these terms, if that's all we really, and bring it back to you next time. And maybe I could even put it on a slide for the PowerPoint. And then, you know, if that helps, rather than, because it seems like there's not that background information about why these things are being changed. And then I could do that. Again, I'm just trying to move, keep this moving with momentum and, but it doesn't mean that we can't, you can't give me a direction and I'll refine it, we'll bring it back. Because I don't want you making decisions without the right information to you and it's really difficult, because this has been going on for such a long time, I don't really know who has the background, who doesn't have the background. And, and I'm more than happy to do that and bring it back again.
One thing I would suggest, though, is to go as liberal as possible on every one of these things. Again, it's a compliance program, even the setbacks. I mean, it's, it's, just go whatever the, the code is, if there's a zero lot line setback.
Are you talking liberal on the zoning stuff? Because the Building Appeals Board has a different opinion on the, the building side of it, other than the zoning side of it.
We're just talking about zoning.
Right, okay.
Talking zoning.
Yeah, we're talking about zoning.
I jumped over to setbacks.
Can I, jumping, jumping ahead in, in the agenda, it looks like our next meeting, we really don't have much going on. Maybe we could really devote some more time, like Kathleen's saying, maybe if we have some more background information, it might be a really beneficial, like, work session then, to delve into this a little bit more.
And I just want to make this clear, because this has come up a couple of times. When we continue items, we really would appreciate it if you keep all your materials and then bring them back the next time, because we don't ask applicants to bring in more for us to distribute to you at each time, that's kind of cost prohibitive. I don't mind doing this, because I'm the applicant, sort of, you know, in this case. But it is, it is, we, we really anticipate that you'll keep these and then we add on to it. And so, with your binders, if you, if, I'll ask Sherry to remind if you turn your binders in, to keep all of the information for the second unit and not toss it and then just build on it. Because I don't know how much of that is, is useful in, you know, I'm gonna move ahead, assuming that you've read what's here and then just keep on pushing as a refinement.
What's the process for you from, from here? I mean, you, obviously, you're gonna get more feedback from us, you talked about this matrix. Are you also gonna be getting more feedback from the Building Appeals Committee and try to bring, weave that into the, you know, the draft, or?
Right, so, they're, they're scheduled for the 29th of October.
They are, and because Vice Chair Foster wasn't in attendance at last meeting, he didn't get to hear that we are having a joint meeting on that same day with Planning and Building Appeals from six to seven. And the Building Appeals Board meeting is from seven to whatever.
So, we hope that, since we're working a little bit more diligently, they have fewer meetings than, than the planning commission has. And I think our zoning is, is something that we can come up with. The commission, I think, has good direction and knows how to, does this all the time. So I think we can actually kind of finish our part before they finish their part. Their part is, it's highly, I think that there's issues with where the building code will allow them to not require standards and when it can. And that's a big issue and Mr. Fletcher will be coming that meeting and advising them on what they can and cannot do, as far as that. And that, I think, may take a considerable amount of time, but if we're done with our issues, then I think that we're just gonna have that sit and wait and then get theirs together, then, then I will set it for a public hearing and the entire document will come back to you, for you to recommend to city council. That's how it will work. So, and I think, at, at that point, I really, I, I don't, I think that at that point, there's also some talk about we're working on the regular secondary residential unit, you know, just the regular, and I think we probably want to have that in the back of our head as we're talking about this kind of stuff. Because obviously, the regular ordinance is so restrictive that people, I mean, I would assume that it, there's a lot of units that are then non-compliant, because it's difficult. So we probably need to look at that and see if there's anything that can be reworked to make it not so stringent and maybe encourage it more.
I would think it's the next logical step.
So that's kind of where we are with this, and like I said, I can do, I can do a matrix that says, well, this is what it says. I can put in any format that it helps you understand the progression, or how it is, or why we need to change it, or what the impacts are. We could also, once you get to a certain point and you have, you say, well, I don't know, what is, what is a zero setback or a one? I mean, obviously, you can't have eaves to overhang a property line, right? If you're on the property line, you guys are all in the business well enough to know you gotta have a firewall, right? There's lots of things that could get kicked in when you're close to a property line. But we also could, we could also do some, you know, mockups of what it would look like if you said, yes, it can encroach three feet, but no eaves, no, no air conditioning, no heaters, nothing, nothing, you know, if your, if your building's there, then I want your air conditioner in the back. Where I worked before and we had setbacks that were three feet, we didn't let anything go in that three feet. That three, three feet has to be clear so you can bring your toter back there, your garbage can, whatever, you know, whatever you need to have, you know, and no eaves into it, you know, you get that straight cut off on that side. So you have a true three feet, you know, we're not doing three feet and then, oh, wow, it's really only a foot and a half. So, there's things like that we could do and actually show you what it looks like and what a, or a typical one would be. Or we could even break this down and say, you know, on lots that are less than this, you know, but in lots that are greater than this, this wouldn't apply to this. I mean, it's however you want to carve it, so that you know that you're addressing those issues that are really, just pertain to the smaller lots and maybe the downtown area, you know, where it's really difficult. And I don't know, I really don't know, I don't have a really good handle on what is, like Sherry says, three-foot setback. And if she's telling you that, she's the one, Sherry's the counterperson, she's the first person to hear that, then I would assume that's pretty valid, that it's garage conversions in the three feet. So I think we need to talk about the three feet versus the five feet and see where we're going with that.
Is that something you would bring, you can, you want to work on?
Yeah, I can bring something back. And then, I think the other thing is that, you know, the Building Appeals Board has like an ad hoc group and Mr. Fletcher can explain, I guess, about ad hoc groups, but if you guys want to work on the garage conversions or do you want staff to bring something back? And it's working fine for me to kind of throw out a template, and that's probably the preferred method, is that, it's a lot easier, I think, to critique when you have something, a baseline to critique, I think that's a good way to work. No, I don't like this, I like that.
Reference.
And if you want, I can, I can tell you what other cities are doing, but I don't really think it helps in this case, because I think everybody here really knows how Ojai is and you don't really need to look at what other cities are doing, because it probably doesn't a good fit, so.
So yes, I would say we do want the matrix, or at least I would like to see the matrix.
Yeah, and I just want to see it as legal as possible, because it's a compliance program, so.
All right, so what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna take this next version and I'm going to unbold all this bold, Sherry and I talked about that, un-bolding, I'm gonna- to un-bold all this bold, Sherri and I talked about that, unbolding, I'm gonna take off all the underline, and I'm going to bold the stuff that we need to talk about. So it, when this becomes a handout, and somebody wants it to have all that bold again, that's fine. But for right now, I want to take it off, and I want you to be able to see the areas that we've talked about, and where there's things that I think that you, that you really need to come to grips with, whether this is narrow enough, this is big enough, this is, you know. And what we have is multiple, multiple constraints here, and what we don't want to do is have so many, that then the window that you fit in, and the graph is so small.
Right, right. Exactly.
Okay. And so with that, I'll, then I just ask you to, you know, give me, uh, how do we, we do this, Joe? To keep the, the discussion open, or?
This is just a discussion item, so nothing to-
Okay.
So here, we're gonna continue the public hearing?
Yeah, continue it, and then give me a direction, please.
He's not a public speaker.
It was at one time noticed, and it's been continued over and over again.
Okay, then we continue the public.
Yeah. So we need a motion to continue the public hearing?
All right, sir. I'll make a motion that we-
Are you leaving? I'm sorry, go ahead.
Continue, oh, sorry, go ahead.
I have not been here, to something I've done with city council, you don't have to make motions to close public hearings. The chair has the discretion to close the public hearing. It's, it's an old tradition in Ojai. I don't know where it came from. I told the council about it.
All these years.
They said, thank you, thank you, thank you. So the chair is fully empowered to close public hearing. The gavel and the power that goes with it.
You don't have to-
I like it.
No.
Motion to close public hearing.
No, that's, that's a nice tradition, but it's not required by law at all, and I've never seen it in 33 years of public law. Yeah. And I love giving more power to the chair, of course.
I don't know. It's more responsibility. Thank you for telling us. But we do need a motion on this to continue it, right? Yes. So Kathleen, you started to make your-
Yeah, so I'll make a motion that we continue the, um, item, uh, the review of the draft second unit compliance program, specifically the modified zoning regulations. And we will have new direction provided.
And we want to continue that to our-
Oh, yeah.
October 18?
To October 18.
Fifteenth?
Is it 15th?
Yeah.
To, um, October 15.
Yeah. Okay. We have a second.
I'll second that.
Lauren seconds it. Could we have a roll call, please?
Did we need to provide specific direction in that motion?
I think we, I think we have.
Got it? Okay.
All right.
Yes. Lajowski, Jagiello?
Yes.
Isabella?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Merk?
Yes.
Nolan?
Yes.
Nicklin?
Yes, all right.
She wants us to keep this in here.
Going mad with power here, now that I can close public hearings on my own. Um, could we have the director's report, please?
Okay, so, um, you're looking at the director's decisions through, um, the last two weeks, through the 24th. And we just have signs, and mostly political signs, we're getting a lot of those in, a zoning letter. And a zoning letter is where we kind of do zoning conformance. We just kind of say, you know, what's the history of the property, what the zoning is, and what, kind of just putting in writing what we normally tell people verbally, but lots of people need those for modifications to their loans and things like that. So we do do those on occasion. And did a couple of temporary uses. Just kind of some minor stuff. And things that aren't here, aren't on here, is we also do business licenses, too. We haven't put those on that list. And then for the code enforcement, can I move on to the next item? Is that fine?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. And so the code enforcement, we continue to just work on those and move those forward. And, um, we're closing a lot of cases, the list is getting shorter. Um, and, um, like I said, there's always, just kind of for informational purposes, because we can't get into a lot of detail with them.
You closed the case with the tarp on the roof.
Yeah.
That's fantastic.
There's some, there's been some, a lot of movement, actually. It's pretty good. And then, um, so finally, then we have our upcoming meetings, and, and, um, we, we've, we have some things that are, that are pending. But again, you know, we are making sure that we have all conditions before we agendize them, because we do, you know, we don't have control of fire, and, and, um, outside agencies as much as we'd like, they're not in-house. So it's making sure, before we bring them forward, that we have all that done. Um, and you can see down here, the skate park lighting, we're, we're working, we've been working with them for weeks now, trying to get a complete application, and they have gone forward and gotten permission from the school district as the, as the owner. So we're trying to move that forward. And we're pushing it, because we, they would like it to be pushed forward, but we're having to kind of keep backing it off, as we still need more items. And we're, we're very optimistic when we place it on there. So we are trying to move it forward. And with that, I guess, um, I think we got three new projects in this, this, this week. It's kind of a busy week for us, and so we have some, I think, people that are actually moving things forward, which is kind of nice. And I think that's it.
Wonderful. Thank you. Do we have any subcommittee reports?
Oh, just briefly. Um, with Complete Streets, uh, we, actually, we hadn't met for a couple of months, and we did meet today. And we discussed, um, how we were gonna present our information to share with staff, and hopefully our new consultant for the neighborhood planning. So we just kind of came up with a format, um, for that. So we're gonna do like a summary of what Complete Streets has done, and then share that information, including some maps that we've done also. And you know, one other thing I, I will bring up, um, the topic came up, uh, where was all the, the data stored? Because we had done this walkability index sheets for a good portion of the city. And I have them all in a box, because we still haven't had the, uh, the GIS input. So the topic came up today of asking the city about getting funding to do that, because the timing with the neighborhood planning would be perfect. I did get a quote, or several quotes, um, I don't know if it was at least two years ago. Um, I could look those up again. Of course, we'd have to get new quotes, um, to submit, but I just wanted to mention, because I'd be coming to you, Kathleen, with that. But, um, we did have Stephen Foster, myself, and then members from the public at the meeting, and everybody felt like that was pretty smart timing, if we could get that information input, so. Okay.
Thank you. I believe that concludes our meeting.